Let us stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Trepp, could you please call the roll?
Bartholomew?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Fowler?
Yes.
Care?
Here.
Parker?
Present.
Russell?
Here.
President Poznanski?
Here.
We have seven present.
Okay, let us move into the approval of the agenda. I do have one addition. Does anybody else have anything before I take the floor? Okay. We need to address, I put it on different pieces of paper, closing out the crosswalk project. If we could add that on to, I suppose we could even do unfinished since this has been an ongoing, do H specifically addressing that large step in front of the Masonic is where we need to be with that. Any other additions to the agenda? If none, could I have an approval?
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight, May fifteenth.
Support?
Motion by Parker, support by Bartholomew. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Moving into our approval of the minutes, we're gonna go minute by minute. We have a few here. Let's start with our, where do we have? Our April seventeenth Board of Trustees meeting. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, or a motion?
Motion to approve the draft minutes from April seventeenth.
Second.
Okay, motion by Parker, second by Fowler, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Moving into closed session, those are your green ones at your table. That was also for April seventeenth. If there is to be any changes, we do need to go into closed session, which I'm okay with, but let's move that to the end so we don't have to file everybody out and file everybody back in.
Make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from April seventeenth.
Support?
Motion by, sorry, Parker, support by Care, all in favor of this special meeting?
Aye.
Sorry, closed session.
Hand it down to Catherine.
Yes, please, when available.
They cannot go home. Moving into our special meeting for April twenty-fourth. Additions, deletions, motions.
Motion to approve the minutes for the April twenty-fourth special meeting.
Support.
Motion by Parker, support by Rousseau, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Moving into the special, or the budget workshop for April twenty-fourth. Additions, deletions, motions.
Motion to approve the budget workshop minutes from April twenty-fourth.
Support.
Motion by Parker, support by Care, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Into our special meeting for April twenty-fifth.
Motion to approve the special meeting minutes from April twenty-fifth.
Support.
Motion by Parker, support by Rousseau, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. And into our final budget workshop for April twenty-fifth.
And I'll run the category with the approval of the budget workshop, April twenty-fifth minutes.
Support.
Motion by Parker, support by Rousseau, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Moving into the approval of our bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Second.
Motion by Edwards, second by Parker, all in, no, take your role call, sorry.
Edwards?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we have our no special presentations and we have correspondence. We have, let me see, I have a list here. So we had, it's whoever wrote in wanting to be read at correspondence.
Did you keep it to the three minutes? Cut yourself off?
If the council wants to make that motion, but that's, I mean.
Last time, if it's correspondence, Mr. Trepp is doing this. Regarding the correspondence, the last correspondence that we had just kept going on infinitely, so. Give it the same, the same as if you're speaking up here at the stand, the time limit, that's all I'm asking. Makes sense?
I don't think we've set a precedence for that. I think if people wrote letters, they want them to be heard. Going forward, maybe that could be a new idea, but it's not something we've discussed in the past.
So does the, uh.
I would agree with Don.
Procedures saying that, is there a, do they have to be read per the rules?
Well, didn't we all receive it and read it?
No, not all of them. So we had a lot of correspondence. Some correspondence specifically asked for it to be forwarded to all the trustees. We did such. Some correspondence asked for it to be added into the packet. We did such. Some correspondence asked specifically to be included and read. Some correspondence asked to just be read. We accommodated what every letter said, not reading into any or giving anybody any more foot up than another. So that was, we did the best we could. There was quite a bit.
I'm not asking it not to be read. I'm just saying give it the same amount of time as someone's standing at home.
If you'd like to make a motion and see what the floor has.
We, how would I word that? Give the correspondence the same amount of time as far as their bodies personally being here?
Is that your motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll give Catherine a moment.
So the one that I have here that was at desk when I showed up, it says, please read this letter as part of the communication received. I'd like to read that. If I may, for, on behalf of Mary Meisner.
Yes, you can read.
Hold on, hold on, there needs to be a vote. There is a motion, a second.
Oh, okay.
Let's hold up. Okay, when you're ready, could you call the phone?
Call the roll on that one. Excuse me. Fowler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Edwards?
No.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Care?
No.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries, five two.
Okay. Do you want to read hers?
Yes.
Go right ahead. I have a lot of the other ones to read.
Okay, this is from Mary Meisner, "To the Romeo Village Council, the new owners of the former First Congregational Church have diligently followed your plan to finally become part of the Central Business District. After legally combining all the parcels into one, four of you, seven elected voting council members moved to move the goalposts and now want to know what the owners' intentions are for the five, ten, twenty years in the future. If that is what you expect of them, why do you budget year at a time? Elections have consequences, but integrity, credibility, and character should mandate that promises made should be promises kept. Thank you, Mary Meisner of Romeo, Michigan."
Okay, I have a email, a letter from Gail Bentley.
Dear Village officials, DDA Board, and Elizabeth Miller. Hello, I have contacted many of you in the past with questions, concerns, or praises. I am asking that this letter be included in the packet and read at the next trustee meeting. I have always given the utmost respect to someone who gives up their time for others, and for that, I thank you for your service. This time, I am writing to you with sadness regarding the Elizabeth Miller situation. The DDA has done amazing things since hiring Elizabeth Miller. She has brought our community alive. Her accomplishments were recently submitted, and reputation speaks for itself. This community supports her, which was noted by over six hundred, or eight hundred and sixty views on the MIT, standing room only at the DDA Board meeting and views on YouTube. I am sure you have received many letters of support. I hope they are included in her employee file. I was surprised when DDA members were removed and new members put on the board. I'm not sure a prediction could have been made of the turmoil these new members have caused. I am requesting the village to submit a copy of the oath that these new, that these new board members were asked to uphold. We look for leaders to be mentors of our youth. I am ashamed by these actions and feel the bullying needs to stop. Furthermore, these new members should be required to take a bullying seminar and code of ethics class. Their service needs to be reevaluated and action taken. A few months ago, it was decided by the DDA Board not to increase the size of the board. I would like to know why the village president felt the need to do this after it was voted on by the DDA Board. Why would a new business want to start here? How does our community overcome such a display of poor ethics? I'm not sure it would be easy to get sponsorship for events after what continues to go on. The big picture needs to be looked at. Romeo's reputation is being threatened. Unfortunately, Mr. Brant resigned from the DDA. His service was appreciated. Mr. Hayes and Mr. Tar have been fair and respectful. Veterans of the Board have tried to guide and educate new members. They too have been bullied and disrespected publicly. I was not able to watch the first budget workshop since it was not televised. I did watch the second one. I could feel the tension. I was wondering the name of the attorney representing the board. She was referred to as Stacy. When was she hired or has she always been employed? Since this is a committee approved by the village trustee and the village attorney is Mr. Clark, does he not represent the DDA Board? I'm questioning if this could be a conflict of interest if an issue occurs between boards and the president being on both boards. Also, at the budget meeting on four eighteen twenty-three, Saint Laurent talked about a new marketing group. Does the DDA have a marketing firm under contract? If so, why would we be changing? At one point, McLeod even suggested getting rid of the employee assistant to help with legal fees. I really question the attack to remove these two employees, the only two employees the DDA has. Are you concerned about losing volunteers? I hope.
Okay, that was Ms. Gail Bentley. We have. Julie Day, "Good morning. Please include the attached letter to be read at the next meeting. Thank you.
Romeo Village Council, regarding the Romeo Downtown Development Authority. Dear ladies and gentlemen, hopefully by now you have come to a conclusion regarding the village DDA and the new board members. Why were four members appointed and only two were advertised for? No one has answered this question. I am still calling for the removal of the new board members, including the village president. Mrs. Poznanski can still be president, but her involvement should only be for appearances sake. Enclosed is a compiled list of the happenings that went on in the village offices between Elizabeth Miller and village president Megan Poznanski. It is apparent the new village president had great expectations that she could just shut out the current executive director of the downtown development. Where would she go? No office means Elizabeth can't work. No work means they can, they get to complain about the director. If you refer to the notes from November thirty, twenty twenty-two, members Hayes and Miller requested several times for reasoning about the office, and none would be given. All Ms. Poznanski would say is, all will be revealed in time and legal counsel is reviewing the lease for violations. What will be revealed? That is, that it seems she had this plan from the start. Her plot to remove Ms. Miller has failed. Your discord is this village begins with the unprofessionalism of the village president and is supported by the new members. Forming new committees to oust the current executive director. Committees formed without a majority. Secret meetings and promises to others that they would get Elizabeth's job. This so-called committee had several derogatory reviews of Elizabeth's job performance. There is only one I received from the village of Romeo. This is dated August twenty twenty-two. Have you been to a meeting? I have. You need to witness the harassment and lack of control some of these members have. When someone is asked a complex question, it requires a complex answer. No constant interruption obviously intended to fluster the executive director. Instead of allowing Elizabeth to finish answering the question, she was berated by this board member screaming, "That is not what I asked you. Answer the question." And suddenly, a demanding, demanding voice screaming, "You work for me." This board member needs to be reminded she is not speaking to her partner or child. I am not a violent person, but if she were to speak to me like that, she would have found herself on the floor. That is how these professionals treat the employee. Even Mr. Hayes admits in an email that there have been too many issues with the dynamic of the new board members and how they choose to operate, how they choose to operate. No bylaws, no procedures, how they choose. Thankfully, another business owner replied to the DDA regarding a board member slandering Elizabeth and telling his employees that Elizabeth was telling people not to go to his establishment. He obviously saw through this.
Okay, that was Ms. Julie Day. Ms. Deena Polley. Attached is a letter that I am requesting to be added to the board packet for the meeting on Monday, May fifteenth, twenty-three, regarding the applicant request for one oh two Church Street. I would appreciate if you could confirm back to me that it was included.
Dear Village of Romeo Board of Trustees, my name is Deena Polley, and I am a lifelong resident of the Romeo and Washington community since nineteen seventy-eight and a Romeo graduate. I am writing this letter to the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees in regard to the request of the property owners of the former First Congregational Church located at one oh two Church Street for a zoning change request from R one to Central Business District, CBD. Jeff and Lisa Rapp are personal friends of mine. Not that this would or should carry any weight in your decision process. What should carry weight to support and approve this request is to consider and remember that both of them and their families either are currently or in the past longtime business owners in the Romeo and Washington community. Rapp's Concrete currently owned and operated by Jeff Rapp. Rapp's Orchard previously owned and operated by Carl and Karen Rapp, Jeff's parents. Lisa Teneglia Rapp owned and operated a child store with another relative in Frontier Town. Ida Teneglia, Lisa's mother, owned and operated Fifth Corner Restaurant and Deli in the village of Romeo. There is no doubt that running a successful business in the community is and has been proven by both Jeff and Lisa Rapp. One could say it is in their blood. They operate their business to a very high standard, both currently and in the past, always keeping the customer and the community paramount. Rapp Concrete has supported the community with countless donations and sponsorships through the years. Supporting them, supporting them with this dream to be able to operate a fine venue establishment should be a no-brainer to the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees. When I heard the news that Jeff and Lisa had the winning bid for the church, my first thought was that I couldn't think of anyone better. Preservation of such a historical icon in the village is so important. The excitement from both on the dream of what to do with it proved to be challenging, but they decided the best thing was to create a quality venue for weddings, showers, private parties, wakes, et cetera, was something that the entire community would benefit from. It would be foolish of the Village of Romeo Board of Management to be short-sighted on this decision. The potential for financial revenue for other CBD businesses could be substantial. Example below is solely an approximated example. Average cost per person for a wedding is at least a hundred dollars per person. If the venue holds two hundred guests at a hundred dollars, it's twenty thousand dollars, less four thousand rental fee with sixteen thousand potential financial gain to other CBD businesses. Florists, chocolate store, caterers, party rental, et cetera. If forty weddings were booked in a year, the result of the example above would be six hundred and forty thousand in opportunity revenue.
Okay, that was Ms. Deena Polley. Rick Hagelstein, "Good even, good evening. This was forwarded to me and was asked to be read by our clerk at the May fifteenth meeting. Thank you, Justin.
My name is Rick Hagelstein and my address is forty-two thirty Fisher Hills Drive, Bruce Township. I am also a Bruce Township Planning Commissioner, although I am not here on official business, but rather as a concerned nearby citizen. It is unconditional, if an unconditional rezoning request at one oh two Church Street from residential to commercial were before me as a planning commissioner, I would have multiple concerns. Within the current zoned residential district regarding noise and odor, permitted uses under the village ordinance standard forty-six dash one fifty-two B six states. No equipment or process shall be used in such home occupation which creates noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference detectable to the normal senses of persons off the lot. More specifically regarding noise, what would hours of operation be restricted to? Fumes and odors. How would range hood odors from grills, broilers, and fryers be mitigated to prevent restaurant odors from creating nearby nuisances? Would hot foods be restricted to catered and/or on-premises food preparation, restricted to cold sandwiches and salads only? Vibration, most DJ or live band reinforcement sound systems include subwoofers that shake and vibrate the ground and are felt nearby, with their restrictions to prevent this use. Special land use for churches, ordinance standard forty-six dash one fifty-three B six states. Churches may include accessory community centers, provide that such centers are limited to activities sponsored by church members only. The facilities shall not be rented as banquet facilities for the general public. Lighting, ordinance standard forty-six dash five seventy-five. Regulates lighting maximum illumination and lighting trespass onto adjacent properties. Would this be used as an opportunity to ensure all outdoor lighting is in compliance? Parking, minimum required parking spaces for auditorium incidental to churches. Ordinance standard forty-six dash six one three A two B one states that one space for each three seats, plus one for each two employees. If no seats, one for each fifty square feet of floor area. Church parking peak times are typically during prenoon Sundays. Alternatively, parking for event venues and restaurants occur during peak times and potentially competes with already sparse parking within the village. Parking overspill onto nearby side street runs the additional risk of nuisance complaints from late-night patron conversations while walking to and from vehicles. In addition, residential driveway ingress egress, as well as availability of adjacent to residents on street parking spaces may be affected. Precedent, what is, what is allowed for this applicant runs the risk of becoming the new standard? Okay, that was Mr. Rick Hagelstein. Barbara Zarek. "Please include this letter in the board packet to be read at the next board meeting, Monday, May fifteenth. Thank you. Dear Village of Romeo City Council members, my name is Barbara Zarek, and I have worked in Washington Township at Pamela's Catering for the past nineteen-plus years. And over the years, I have also lived and worked in Romeo. I am writing to you to show my support to the Rapp family and the church property at one oh two Main Street to be rezoned Central Business District. I believe to let this become an event space would be a major asset to the whole community because of all the business it will generate, not only for the Rapp family themselves, but for the surrounding area as well. When I found out that the church that was wasting away, uncared for, neglected, as so many other businesses in the area, and was purchased and being restored to a grand event space, how wonderful this would be for the community to have something so unique in an area that has nothing comparable. Allowing this new venue to be rezoned as a central business district will have an amazing major impact on Romeo and the surrounding areas. The new space will bring wonderful memories for so many people for years to come. Thank you for taking the time, for letting me respectfully ask to please let this approval happen. Sincerely, Barbara Zarek." This is Debbie Martone. "Please read this during public correspondence at Monday night's village council meeting, as I will be out of town on Monday and unable to attend the meeting. Thank you, Debbie. Dear Village of Romeo Council members, I hate to have to be the one to point out the obvious, but here I go anyway. It seems rather obvious from the information provided when the First Congregational Church was on the market that the Rapp family should have been well-informed on the particulars of that building before they purchased it. However, it is obvious fact that they, A, purchased a building that has been a church since it was erected in eighteen thirty; B, purchased a building that was outside of the Central Business District; C, purchased a building that was not zoned for commercial use; D, purchased a building that was zoned, R one residential; E, purchased a building that they obtained at the highest bidder in an auction; F, purchased a building that was in need of repair; G, purchased a building that included three separate parcels; H, purchased a building that would likely be expensive to repair, listed as one of the reasons the church decided to leave; I, purchased a building that was never owned by anyone but the Congregational Church in the hundred and twenty-seven-year history; and J, purchased a church that the vast majority of residents wanted to see remain in place. Please explain to me where any of the facts listed can be misconstrued to not be true. And please explain to me why, after the Rapp should have known these facts prior to purchase, that it now becomes such a major issue to change these facts because they do not want to conform to the realities of their purchase. Any parent with more than one child knows that they cannot bend rules for one without bending them for everyone. Why then bother to have rules in the first place? If the council and/or planning commission conforms to the requests the Raps are asking for regarding their obvious oversight, which was on their part, not the village's part. for regarding their obvious oversight, which was on their part, not the village's part, when purchasing the church building, one should expect to start bending the rules for everyone. This includes those who want to run non-conforming businesses from their home, erect privacy fences without a lot survey, tear down structures without permission, the building of non-conforming structures without permits, the list goes on and on. The village has a master plan, ordinances, regulations, policies, proper procedures, et cetera, for a reason. It should not matter who has the loudest voice when those rules do not apply to their wishes. The Raps appear to be loudly objecting to the decision already made by this council and have been rallying the troops, so to speak, to support them in their quest to bend the rules in their favor. Another obvious fact to mention is that they do have options that would not be so controversial and the need to create such unnecessary chaos if they feel they made a bad investment. Sincerely, Debbie Martone. Okay. Moving into public comment, we have three minutes at the podium for any and all. We are going to take time to let everybody here speak their three minutes. Then we're going to try and get everyone who's still here outside to kind of funnel in. Everyone take a turn and keep the room safe according to the fire marshal. So, I'm sorry ma'am, we are not taking questions right now. We are at public comment. Could you?
I'll give a 30 second.
Are you gonna?
Yes. Zach Fowler, 319 Dickinson Romeo. And I know everybody received this in the mail, and I think the timelines are very good here. In January, I did vote yes out of the planning commission, strictly out of Jeff Rapp. I know Jeff Rapp, and I know that him and his family are sincere of any development that's going on here in the village. At that time, I was still looking for something other than, you know, Central Business District. And in February, you guys joining the property, I'm still suggesting other alternatives like mixed use, all that kind of stuff, because Central Business District doesn't stay with the property owners, it stays with the property. And in that historic area, let's say after several years, the convention center doesn't pan out too well, well, it's a developer's dream. I'd come in here and offer a million, two, million, three, Central Business District, water and sewer. It's fantastic, buy. So, that's my main stage. Yes, I supported, yes, I support the Activity Center or the Banquet Center, but beyond that point, I can't support the Central Business District zoning. There has to be another alternative to that zoning. So that's where I stand.
Okay, you guys can, I don't know how you wanna just. Yeah. There's really no way to lie.
Sharon Smith, 377 North Main Street. The Village of Romeo faces a serious challenge with the rezoning of this historic building that was once home to the Congregational Church. I realize the congregation is no longer there, but according to the Raps, in a previous village meeting, there were a number of other churches interested in buying it and they were ready to throw in the towel and sell to them. I say, please, let's let them. The Raps have a long history here. I appreciate and I respect that, but I hope that they can respect the fact that they took a risk when they bought the church building. They were betting that the old regime would be reelected and their rezoning request would sail through, but that didn't happen. The majority of the current board has already shown that they treasure this historic building and their concern for its future. They know that once the neighborhood and property is rezoned, anything can happen. For those of you who support this, I beg you to look at the long term, not the short term. The Raps could sell, a developer can buy, and our clock bells will fall silent. That's why this kind of rang true to me. We love our bells. Within just five to 10 years of neglect, a developer could say there's no choice but to demolish due neglect and then build who knows what. Developers have deep pockets and a lot of patience. I saw this happen many, many times in my former town of Salem, Massachusetts. Buildings that were 200-plus years old are gone forever, and that can happen here. How do we even know that they're going to keep this business for very long? I kind of ran some numbers, and I thought, let's say that the venue has 52 events a year, and that's ambitious. At $11,000 per wedding reception, let's say, that's $572,000. When you take away property tax, insurance, upkeep, salaries, whatnot, they might be getting $200,000. If it's half that, those number of events, $100,000. And how long will it be before they say, you know, it's a lot of work and we're just going to sell off? Still, they're going to sell off eventually. And then we have to consider the loud parties that will be going on every weekend, 100-plus cars, some people probably drunk. You know, this is probably not going to bode well. The village we have is why we stay here, why we moved here, why we moved back, like I did. I've been praying every single night that all of you will not repass this, or not pass this rezoning. It's going to forever change the face of Romeo for us and for your children, and it will forever put that historic building in jeopardy.
30 seconds.
I pray, pray, that you will not let this rezoning be your legacy.
So my name is Dina Polley, 810130 Mile Road in Washington. As I stated in my letter, I'm a longtime resident of the community. I'm here to address the board regarding the Raps' rezoning request. First, I have to say that I'm shocked by the audacity and unethical behavior by trustee Zach Fowler to have a teenager hand-deliver letters to village residents on this topic. Board members have an obligation to be impartial. This was unethical and he should be held accountable for his inappropriate action. The Raps started in this process in November 2022, and they did get their ducks in a row, doing exactly what was requested. Instead, the board continues to cherry-pick the planning commission's motive to approve, and based on subsequent board meetings, one can only assume that there is an underlying personal agenda. I have to say it's politics at its finest. One must ask if you lied. Did you state your support solely to get the property consolidated from four lots to one to gain additional tax revenue? It was even mentioned at the May 4 meeting that if granted Central Business District, you must grant other homes that are touching. Not necessarily true. This building is significantly different than any other R1 home. This church is not a single-family use. It's nearly 10 times the size of any home touching the property. All setback requirements are fully achieved with the proposed use, and it makes total sense for it to be added to the Central Business District. Instead, you're attempting to pigeonhole them into a corner, limiting their ability to become a financially stable business in the community and adjust to unforeseen economic conditions that may require adjusting their business model. It is completely short-sighted not to see the economic benefits that approving this application for the Central Business District hold. The Raps selected a business model that would support, not compete with existing businesses. As proposed, this private venue would preserve the historical church and the highly sought-after bell, establish as a beautiful and viable new business offering financial support to existing business, new employment opportunities, and a place for others to celebrate life milestones with family and friends. I ask all of you not to be short-sighted in your decisions. Rather, see that this is a vision of, is a true opportunity to all aspects of the village, the residents, the existing businesses, and the entire community. Stand behind your spoken words of promise with conviction. Lead by example to gain the trust in the community that this board supports current businesses and future business growth with a vote of yes, thereby approving this unique and one-of-a-kind historical landmark preservation and business opportunity to the Central Business District. Thank you.
If we could have order, we are not going to clap after everybody. We're going to get through this fast. I don't want to encourage or discourage anybody from either side, so if we could just please keep this silence as we move through our public comment.
Good evening. My name is Tom Offer. I live at 264 North Main, directly across the street from the church. My wife and I moved here 36 years ago. We have been active members of the Historical Society since we moved here. We believe in preservation. We have been, our homes been on home tours and all those kinds of things. And when we moved here, we believed that we were moving into a neighborhood. That neighborhood just happened to be on Main Street. Many of our friends, good friends that we have developed over the years, live on Main Street and also on Church Street. So we have, we love to sit on our front porch and watch people walk their kids and their dogs and all of that. So we believe we're part of the neighborhood here. So when that church went under, we were, actually, we were glad to see someone buy that church and agree to preserve it because we believe in preservation. So we thought all of that was good. However, when it comes to rezoning that property, then that changes the entire picture because now that destroys the neighborhood feature of that property. Let's just take, we've got churches all over Romeo. And let's say another church in another neighborhood went under and some business comes in and wants to buy it. All of a sudden now, we're going to start rezoning the properties all throughout the neighborhoods in Romeo because the current churches can't afford them? Does that make sense? Just because this one happens to be on Main Street and it happens to be a property that we all agree we'd love to see it preserved, does that make sense to abandon the rules and start rezoning things in a way? Because you could have any kind of business. As you've heard from many, many different people, you could have any kind of business go in there. The fact that the Raps are committed to preserving that property as it is, is a good thing. But the law, the central business law, is not going to guarantee that. In fact, it won't guarantee that that property will be preserved.
30 seconds.
Just because the Raps say they will do it, that's not legally binding on anybody. So it won't preserve, Central Business District will not preserve that historic building. So it's, there must be another solution where you can preserve the property and maybe even allow for that to become, you know, a somewhat commercial-type building, operation.
That's your time. Thank you.
Not commercial.
Hello, my name is Milt Stearnsberry. I live on Church Street, 193. Lived there for 40 years. Prior to that, I lived on North Fremont since 1971. So been in the neighborhood a while. My kids, raised them, and now my grandkids are in the area. They all go down to the library, they go mail letters for me, and it was always a nice church. Well, it's not my purview what the owners bought. I can't help them out with their investment. But what I do have a say in is changing the location and what it's going to be used for. In my experience, and I have some, when you have an event center and you add alcohol to it, which I don't know how an event center would survive without it, whether they bring it in or whether it's done through a license, it changes the complexity completely. Now, if people go to the bar, they drink. They go to an event center, they drink. But in my experience, they drink, if it's free, it's for me and I'll take three. They drink more. You get a big outside influx of people that you've never seen before with different motivations. Now, at 2:00 in the morning, I will hear commotion. I will have people on my front porch. I will have people urinating in my bushes. I will have people smoking dope in their cars. I will hear, there will be fights. And if you have 200, I heard the number 200, if you have 200 there or more, you better put a couple officers on duty, extra. Because I hope that I'm wrong if this passes. I'm hope that it's the most peaceful, most tranquil venue in the world, but I don't think so. So unfortunately, it has unintended consequences I don't think people have thought through. I think most people in here have been to an event. I'm not against people that drink. I'm not against people that have parties. I am against it on my street, where my kids are raised and where my grandkids live around the corner, come to visit. I do have a skin in this game. So unfortunately, it is unfortunate that the Raps think this is the, that this will solve certain problems.
30 seconds.
Thank you. It will not. It'll have, like I said, unintended consequences that I don't think anyone has thought through. I will have to live it, while people that don't live on Church will not have to live it, but I will have to. I do not want a Tilson Street with booze every weekend. So, that's it.
I'm reading this letter on behalf of Bill Miller. Dear Village of Romeo Board of Trustees, I have been following the planning commission and village meetings related to the First Congregational Church. This church and the clock are of special interest to me. Back in 2009, I watched a TV show called Save Our History and determined I had the equipment in my shop and skills to repair the clock, which had stopped ringing throughout our town for 15 to 20 years. I begged my way into the church and with the help of a few friends, the Romeo Historical Society, and financial donations from the community, we did a complete restoration of the entire clock mechanism. We have also added several safety measures such as safety rail, handrails, replaced rotting floorboards on two levels. Many residents, passerbyers, children, and churchgoers have been able to enjoy the sound of the hourly chime of the 2,000-pound bell. Also, many students on school field trips and members of the community have been able to learn and enjoy our work on the clock by physically climbing the ladders to see and learn how a hand-wound clock works. Did you know there are only a handful of clock-wound towers in America that are still in operation? I am very proud of being part of the restoration of this village icon. I lost sleep over the future of the clock when I learned the church had closed its doors, and lost even more sleep when I had learned the church was going up for auction. Much to my surprise, not only was I excited to hear it was a local Romeo family that bought the church, but I was extremely overjoyed to receive the most amazing welcome into the Raps endeavor. When I called Jeff to introduce myself, Jeff said, "I heard all about Bill, the clock guy. Since that day, I couldn't be more excited about the future of this historical building and clock tower." Not to mention, without even knowing me, without ever having met me, the Raps said, "Bill, keep the key. We are all Romeo people. We have the same goals for this church and the clock. You are welcome to come and go as you please. Just keep us, just keep the clock working and the bell ringing. The community wants this." And when I asked if tours could still be had, they said absolutely. I show up to the church typically one to two times a week. I am most often greeted by Jeff or Lisa who are both friends and now family. They are either cleaning, giving tours, repairing, and sometimes arguing with what people would want as repurposing items in the church, what the material should be used. They definitely put a lot of thought into everything. The Raps spend most of the weekends at the church when they are not working their own jobs. People walked in those doors unannounced, and the Raps stop what they are doing and walk them around. I'm amazed by their kindness and the way they welcome.
I wrote the letter and evidently you didn't get it, but it's Dear Village Council. My name is Francine Salvatore and I've been in business in the Romeo/Washington area for over 24 years. It was brought to my attention that due to the fact that the new sanctuary, formerly the Congregational Church, is not located in the Business District, but considered the residential zone of this community. I do not know what the problem is. There should be a way to rezon in order to help the community grow at the same time preserve the beautiful historical landmark within the village boundaries. The Congregational- The Congregational Church is a gem. The showcase just one of the beautiful structures that graced the main way through Romeo. The sanctuary is just one example of progress while still keeping the integrity of the beautiful building. I know a lot of citizens and parishioners of this church were saddened by the church closing. But by allowing the church to become an event venue, the sanctuary not only allows for the gem to be preserved and reused for many events, bringing business into the entire community. At the big issue is tax base. As I understand, churches are not taxed, but venues are. A caterer in this business for twenty-four years in the community, a location to find a place for, to hold funerals, weddings, is very hard to come by. By allowing the change in the rezoning of this church, this can bring memories of beautiful events within the community for even just small gatherings. Growth is progress and progress brings growth. Without change, we become stagnant. Unless we progress, we regress. Just keep in mind, everyone's talking about alcohol. One block over, the Masonic Temple has weddings and they use the venue, would serve alcohol almost every week with their permits. So, it can be controlled by zoning and by setting limits on time. I've watched the Packard Proving Grounds go from a barn to a venue that is raising six thousand dollars a night for every time they rent it. And it's booked for three years. So, it's only going to bring progress to the community. And I don't understand, you got, you had a venue across the street that was a house that hosted events. So, and, but on that corner, it's not zoned commercial, so you're not going to allow it. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, we're not clapping. Do we, can I get a show of hands for how many left we have in this room so we know when we can? Okay, one, two, three, four, five left in the room. You still have a chance, even if you didn't raise your hand, but, so we at least know that we have five more and then we can start bringing in out there.
Hello, my name's Emma Kenny. I'm a former resident of Romeo. I spent my entire childhood until the age of nineteen in this town, and I absolutely adore it. My fiance and his family are lifelong residents of this town as well. When we found out about the church being purchased, we were curious and happy. When we were informed that the RAPS were the property owners, we were ecstatic. I have known the RAPS family for fifteen years and I could not have handpicked a better local and hardworking family for this opportunity. Listening to Lisa and Jeff's plans for this historic property sounded incredible, truly a gem for the community of Romeo. We couldn't wait to follow along their journey and offer a helping hand wherever they needed it. The idea of a restored venue in downtown Romeo was beyond exciting to us as well as our family and friends. At this age, it seems there's lots of exciting events happening, weddings, bridal showers, baby showers, et cetera. After our engagement in this past January, I knew exactly where I wanted our wedding. I watched the board meetings and I knew based on the information provided, once the parcels were combined into one, the central business zoning would be granted. My fiance and I, both longtime Romeo residents, who are deep rooted in this community, would want nothing more than to have our wedding here, our future baby showers and more. When we inquired, the RAPS told us the same information we'd heard on the mid. Central business district would be granted contingent on parcels becoming one. We knew the RAPS had jumped at this task to get their property ready for the community. With great excitement, I started booking vendors and patiently waiting for approval to officially book the church for our wedding venue. I planned our entire vendor list based on this dream location. Jordan and I have always tried to support local businesses and what a better time to do so than our big day. Main Street Coffee House for our wedding morning coffee and breakfast, Pamela's Catering for dinner, drinks, and desserts, Romeo Village Florist for our beautiful flowers, The Office Pub for our rehearsal dinner, and the church for its incredible historic event space. We have family and friends traveling to Romeo from Tennessee, Georgia, North Carolina, Ohio, Colorado, Texas, and Northern Michigan. All of these loved ones traveling to Romeo to stay for the weekend and experience the charming town we grew up in. We are so impressed by the RAPS and their effort to create this space for the community, for us and for generations to come. Seeing the amount of people knocking on the church door, asking for tours, and to book events already is incredible. It has brought excitement, even more life to this town. I, as well as many others, would be devastated to see this opportunity collapse. I hundred percent believe this church will be blessing to this community. I look forward to the approval of this rezoning. I have an additional letter I would like to read in my three minutes. Dear Romeo Board of Trustees, I am ready to express my support for the conversion of the old church located at 102 Church Street into an event center. My name is Karen Toit. My husband and I are business and property owners in the community. As business owners, we understand the importance of economic development and believe that this conversion would bring many benefits to our community. First and foremost, the church is a beautiful and historic building that deserves to be preserved. By converting it into an event space, we can assure that the building is well-maintained and used for a valuable purpose. Furthermore, an event space in this location would be a unique and attractive option for residents, visitors, looking for venues, weddings, receptions, and other events. In addition, an event space would bring economic benefits to our town. By hosting events, the space would attract visitors who will likely spend money at local businesses such as restaurants and shops. This could help stimulate economic growth and create new jobs in the area. Moreover, converting the church into an event space would provide a much-needed venue.
Could we extend shortly because she is reading for someone else also?
If that's what you'd like to do, but if you do it for one, you do it for all.
Right. So, keep it, keep the way this-
All right, sorry.
No, we don't hand over the floor. You have three minutes, you use it or you don't. You could, she could hand that letter to you.
Yeah, yeah. Anna, TV's all right.
Moreover, converting the church into an event space would provide a much-needed venue for community events. Currently, there are few spaces in our area that we can accommodate large gatherings. By converting the church into an event space, we would be providing valuable resources for the community groups and organizations. In conclusion, we strongly support the conversion of the church located at 102 Church Street into an event venue. We believe this would be a valuable addition to our community and would bring many benefits to our village. We understand the importance of preserving our heritage while embracing change and progress. We urge you to approve this proposal and work together to make it a reality. Thank you for your consideration, Karen and Ed Toit. There's another letter here. To Romeo Council Members, my name is Edwin C. Toit. I reside in Bruce Township and I'm the owner of several businesses and properties in Macomb County. I'm writing to you to voice my support for the church on Main Street being rezoned business so it may be used as an event venue. I have seen much in my ninety years and one thing I have learned, change is the only constant. Churches, once holy, can now become hollow shells if not cared for. It is so essential to define new purposes for them and if they are to remain alive. An event venue offers a gathering space for weddings, anniversaries, birthdays, all reasons for people to come together and enjoy. In this world, a space where people can gather safely and joyful is more valuable than ever. Therefore, I believe it would be a wise decision to rezone the church property and allow it to become an event venue. A space where people can come together, where memories can be made, and ensure that the building remains an important part of our community for generations to come. Respectfully, Edwin C. Toit. I've listened to previous meetings and I've heard many council members, particularly Councilmember Fowler, promised that if certain stipulations were met, this should be zoned commercial in Central Business District. A man is only worth his word. It's been done. What are you worth?
Sir, can you state your name and address for the record?
Nick Swift.
Nick Swift.
Do we have the next one?
Hi, I'm Donna Peters and I've been a resident of Romeo for fifty-six years. My parents had a business, Adam Frank's Meat Market, in the community for thirty-three years. I think family-owned businesses are sacred in this community. I was looking forward to holding our first grandchild's baby shower at the sanctuary this summer, as I love to give back to a community that's been so great to my family over the years. Unfortunately, I was told that wouldn't be possible because of rezoning issues. I understand that the RAPS have adhered to your requests for rezoning and still have been denied. They're trying to reinvest in their community, and I think it's time that we allow them to do so. I ask that you consider the RAPS' request for zoning accommodations. It really could prove to be a wonderful addition to our town. Thank you very much for listening and thank you for your careful consideration.
Thank you.
Next, there's a couple more.
Michael Tenalia, Lisa's older brother. Irrespective of what anybody wants, you've still got to rezone it. You've got it zoned R1. Do you really think someone's going to buy it and move into it as a house? You also have to rezone the Methodist Church as well. It's losing its congregation. It's going to fail. Do you think someone's going to buy it and move into it as a house? You also have to rezone your library. Libraries are closing all around the country. You're going to lose this one too. Do you think someone's going to buy it and move into it as a house? And a last point, Jeff, I did some research today. Did you know you can recoup almost all your investment by selling the clock and the bell? You guys could lose your clock and your bell. It's up to you.
I would do something.
Go ahead, sir. Yeah, take your time. Was that it? Did we have one more hand that was raised? Okay, we have one more in here.
I didn't prepare words. All right, Tim Bilo, I live on Hollister. I'm currently the president of the Romeo Historical Society. You've got to let this happen. We've spent so much time and effort to preserve this church building and it's, the RAPS have come forward, they have a viable plan, they have a viable business work issue. I know that it's a change for the people that live next door, down the street, across the street, but this church and its building has got to be preserved. And if this is the only avenue for that, I, like the gentleman just said, we had offers for the church bell and the clock. I don't think that if you stop this from happening, you lose that structure. And I think, from what I've heard from all the people I've listened to, is that you did make promises, you told them to cross the Ts, dot the Is, and it's a done deal. Well, all of a sudden now, the deal's not done because they've crossed the Is and dotted the Ts.
One more here and then we can start taking from out.
My name is Scott Wallace. I live at 256 North Main, directly across the street from the church. My neighbor Tom spoke here earlier. He and I spoke yesterday over our fence and I'm in complete agreement with him that something needs to happen with this property. The fact of the matter is, is that a church is not going to move into this property and be able to maintain the building. They're just not going to make the money to be able to do it. So, the only way that we can restore this building and keep this building is to allow a business to operate there because they're going to generate a profit. That's what it's going to take to keep the building up and running. I've lived in Romeo since 1997, Romeo High School graduate, and I would hate to see this building go down. People have talked about it being torn down and another commercial building being built there, but it's zoned residential, so somebody can come in and tear it down and build houses there as well. Keeping it residential does not keep the building, it just keeps the zoning. So, something needs to happen. And as far as I'm concerned, the only thing that makes sense is to allow a business to take the building and run it and renovate it and let it operate.
Okay, we will start taking comments from outside this room. We have many people waiting outside.
My name is Tom Stevens. I've been a resident of Romeo for forty-three years. For those of you who may or may not remember and are familiar with 186 South Main, the Brab House, I'm the guy that did that. Okay, renovated that home. And sadly, what I'm seeing here is a very similar situation that happened to my wife and I. We spent a lot of money. That house was a foster care home that shouldn't have been actually running, and I know because I owned a couple at the time. And we were able to secure it and our plan was for a tea room, a bed and breakfast, and an event center. House is fifty-five hundred square feet. I spent, and of course with investors, in excess of six hundred thousand dollars renovating that building. And we went through a lot of wickets to get to where we were. We did go under a special land use. There was no zoning change, but it was allowed in this office district. And what we started with, we thought we were okay with what we were approved to do. We started the business with renting the rooms, doing small showers, weddings, things of that nature, but the one key component that was taken away from us five months after we opened, which we hadn't even opened yet, was the tea room. The tea room was going to be instrumental to the three-pronged business plan that I had, and we'd still be there had I had it today. However, we were sent a cease and desist letter saying, "You're operating as a hall and not a bed and breakfast," which I didn't, for the life of me, understand. And we went through the wickets of basically being shut down for nearly eight months. I canceled thirty-seven weddings. I went through a lot of wickets with, when we finally got the approval, we were not allowed to do the tea room, which really didn't make any sense. One of the things I believe strongly, in fact, I'll take this to my grave, is that it was because I was direct competition. Gentlemen, Anna told me that you are direct competition. We can't have this happen, I'm not going to mention any names, but my comment back was-
Thirty seconds.
Well, my comment back was, "I'm not going to have my red hat ladies throwing back a couple buds and watching a Pistons game. This is a different game." And it was a very successful operation. Police-wise, I've heard the policing issue, okay, the gentleman has a very good point. I had people, actually, the football players from Romeo High School did a lot of policing for me for any kind of wedding. We can only have fifty people, but it can be policed-
Time.
-along with the assistant of the police department. For those of you who know me, want to hear more, you know how to find me. Thank you.
Go ahead. Okay, hold on, we have one, you can come in, but we have one more that stood up.
My name's Chris Obray. I'm reading this on behalf of Mary D. Renstra. Dear President Poznanski and Clerk Carol and Catherine Trapp, my name is Mary D. Renstra, Jacob, daughter of Edward and Louise Jacob. I grew up in Romeo, where my father started the Peach Festival back in 1931 to promote economic growth and bring recognition to the local orchards. My father cared deeply for the community, which is why I'm writing this letter. Although I currently reside in Lansing, my children have made a point of taking me back to Romeo so I can reveal, revel in the memories of my youth on Chandler Street. Yes, the town has changed, but there are many historical landmarks within the village limits that continue to give it character that I remember. The First Congregational Church holds a special place in my heart because my two sisters and I all were married there. Recently, my surviving sister Janet Blank and I donated a parcel of property to the township. The access path off Chandler Street to the Track Footfield was originally donated by my father to the school district in honor of the young men of Romeo who perished in World War II. Due to certain events, my sister and I regained ownership, but were more than willing and able to donate the parcel back to the people of our hometown. We have been told that there are now plans to revitalize the walkway, which will be followed by a ceremonial, by a ceremony to memorialize it. I understand the First Congregational Church has been sold to the RAPS family, who have plans to convert it into a special events venue. I also, I've also been informed that a glitch in zoning that might stall this family's plans to reinvest in their community. I would sincerely appreciate the board's positive vote to allow the church to be included in the Central Business District. The RAPS have deep ties of their own in Romeo's history. Though I haven't lived there for many years, I feel my voice should be heard, given its own history, both past and present with the town. My father believed in keeping business local. I ask that you consider the RAPS' request for zoning accommodation so the First Congregational Church will continue to live on. Respectfully, Mary D. Renstra.
Brian Minton, 280 Preswick. I'm here about this letter we all got in the mail, I'm sure we all got it. I can't say I'm terribly opposed to the event center in one sense, but what I am opposed to is the way this is all going about with the RAPS. We all got the email. I'm also on the planning commission. And as they're selling it as an event center, and it's going to be the minimal events, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, these hours, they're also emailing all of us, talking about how one day they'd like it to be a boutique, they'd like it to be a restaurant, they have different plans for it. And don't handcuff us, give us the CBD. This is just another example of, give us what we want and we'll let you know what we're doing with it later on down the road. Right now, we're going to make it an event center because everybody wants an event center. You don't have to look far. You all received the same email that I received. And in that email, they talk about, "Don't handcuff us in case we have to go another direction in a couple years." Well, what's the other direction? It is our job as a village planning commission, it's our job as commissioners, to look to the future, not just, "We have someone here with a plan." We had the marijuana licensing go through. Everybody thought, "We'll keep it in the industrial-" We had the marijuana licensing go through. Everybody thought, "We'll keep it in the industrial zone." Now we have a, we have a pot shop going right up on 32 Mile Road in an old historic home. Is that what we all intended we wanted? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But that's the consequences of us not thinking about where the future will take us. As far as getting this done, it was mentioned in the planning, a consent judgment, something locking them in where they could have their event center and do this, and it'll fit with the neighborhood. And then when it's gone, if it fails and it has to be sold, it goes back to R1 and the process starts over with somebody else. But as soon as that's brought up, they don't want to be shackled with that. Well, if they really care about what's happening in this neighborhood, and they really want this event center, and that's what they want, then they could go into that consent judgment with the board, with the village, and make it that way so it doesn't continue on down the road to the next person. Because hey, we watched the school get tore down. That's a historic building. We watched the Hans Group tear down a historic house in the village. We watched the house where the parking lot was, is in the village, was a historic home. All these homes get tore down because they get sent into disrepair. Wouldn't take much time for that church, open the doors, let the water flood, and then it could get tore down. They'll be standing before the board saying, "We want a demolition permit because it's no longer economically viable to redo this church." And that's where we could end up. So I'm asking that you guys vote no. Or we come into some sort of consent agreement. We could also give them temporary permit status to have these events that they have planned as we move forward and figure out what is best for this property, as opposed to just giving it the CBD zoning. We have a master plan. It cuts off Church Street, and that's where I'll stay.
My name is Paige Stefaniek, and I'm reading this for Julie Grover. Hello, council members of Romeo. My name is Julie Grover. I am essentially a lifelong resident of Romeo and an enthusiastic supporter of all things Romeo. My family currently resides in a historic home on First Street. My husband and I have also owned three other homes in the village, which we have rehabbed and operated as rentals. I love the history and character of our village, and I feel honored to live here. When I saw the First Congregational Church would be going up for auction, I felt compelled to save this beauty. So many local residents have important memories of this building. I personally have been fortunate enough to help wind the clock and climb the tower. Wow, what an experience. When trying to convince my husband to bid on this property, as this is how it goes in our house, I consulted the Village of Romeo regarding the potential uses for this space. I personally dreamed of making it into a brewery, as many vibrant neighbors, Gross Point and Ann Arbor, to name a few, have repurposed churches in this fashion. Village staff assured me that the village was open to alternative uses, as they just wanted to see the building saved. I was directed to the village building department for further questions. At the building department, I was told the village was open for all uses minus industrial and marijuana. My husband, children, and I then went through open houses to inspect the building and proceeded to bid our life savings in the auction. We were not the winners of this property. From what I am led to understand, there are issues with the zoning of this property and potential use. I compel readers of this letter to consider flexibility and creative uses for these beautiful old structures. If I had been the winner of this property and I was told I could not proceed with our plan after buying it, I would have bankrupted my family. I think we are lucky as village residents to have people willing to invest in the preservation of this historical landmark. I believe as growing, as a growing and changing community, it is essential we adapt with the times and which occasionally necessities necessitates alternative uses for buildings. Thank you for reading this. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me.
Do we have another from out?
Hello, I'm Amy Schultz. I'm at 277 North Main. Some of you may know, it's the White House that is literally right next door to the church. So eight feet from the side of my house is where this is happening. So if it's affecting anybody, it's definitely, literally in my backyard, right? The RAPS asked me to write a letter in support of what they're doing. And initially, I was fully in support of it, of what, everything that they wanted to do. I think it's great. Had some hesitations, though. I met with some of the board members and spoke with some of them that I know personally to find out what the concerns were, right? Because on the front, it sounds really good. But there are other things that came up that we didn't really think about, right? There are things that, that really, the board had pause, right? So wanted to find out what that was about. So spoke to members of the board. They brought some topics in, considered, heard the concerns of, you know, setting a precedent, losing that Main Street feel if we lose some of our house on Main Street, the implications of the noise, the traffic, all of those things, right? I also spoke this week with some of my neighbors on Church Street, on Main Street, on Hollister. And I was really surprised that everyone I spoke to was in support of the project and thinking about it. You know, I don't want to put my support behind something without fully thinking about it. And yes, would there be increased traffic? Sure. But that church has hosted weddings, funerals, baptisms for decades. We have other festivals in the village. We have bike nights. We have jeep nights. We have fish fries. None of this has ever been a problem. Our community loves to celebrate, and this is another way for us to actually share that with other people who don't always come into this area. So yes, you know, could it create some traffic flow problems? Could it create noise problems? Yes, potentially. However, I think the benefit of bringing other people into this area, preserving this church, doing the right thing by it, and doing a new, great idea, something that's going to benefit our community outweighs all of those negatives. And this is literally speaking from somebody who is going to be very, very close to it. I don't know. I think that they're going to do the right thing to preserve the church, and if they don't, then hopefully we're the type of community that whoever comes in behind them upholds that and does the right thing with it. And if not, then we have this board here to come in and help us rectify it, make sure that it stays the course. So they have my full support. I think, I think you guys should approve it and let them move forward with their plans. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Do we have the next? It's the fastest if you come all the way around the front.
Hello, my name is Steve Lesnick. I'm married to Rachel Rapp, who is Jeff and Lisa's niece. I'm reading this on behalf of Connie Chapman, who was out in the lobby and couldn't get out here. She says, "Several of your board members have attended Bruce Township Planning Commission meetings. We both want continuity between districts to control growth and try to stick to our master plans. But every situation is not black and white, so some require a variance, SLU permit, or need to request a zoning change. We do not want to create a stagnant business or housing environment. In Bruce Township, we have made two significant ordinance changes in the last six months to accommodate two different types of businesses in our business district. The town of Belmont is a perfect example of some previous owners that didn't offer good buildings or a good atmosphere. The Main Street was a ghost town. In the past several years, there have been new owners, new money invested, and multiple new businesses, and it looks wonderful. The town of Rochester is thriving with multiple activities, festivals, multiple business types, and a wonderful restaurant and brewery in an old mill. Romeo is known for its beautiful historic homes, historical barn tours, and even having an old fire hall repurposed into a private home. It would be a wonderful thing to turn this church into another viable historic attraction to attract people to Romeo. The hours of operation should not conflict with the post office or library, and I think they have adequate parking so as to not disturb neighbors. This venue would create a place to have weddings, meetings, funeral dinners, showers, et cetera. This venue would create jobs, help local restaurants with catering opportunities, and pay taxes. The RAPS have lived here locally for many generations. Every community has givers and takers. This family wants to give back to their community, not just pad their own pockets and use it for their own personal gain and then skip the area. I hope you will consider allowing them to follow their dream. Thank you."
It's easiest if you come all the way to the front, to the table. Do you, Chief, do you have like an estimate of how many? Two, three more? Okay.
Hello, my name is Susan Cain. I live at 225 North Rawls, across from the new village park and around the corner from the church you're speaking of. I listen to those bells and that clock every day, every night, and it's very soothing to me. I'm also the treasurer of the Romeo Historical Society, and we support the fact that the rezoning is the best that we can hope for, for that church. If it can't be a church, it's got to be something. And that seems to me to be the most logical item that has been presented so far. I also am speaking for Kit Demombro, who is the owner of Town Hall Antiques, and she supports the change in it too. She thinks it will be, do great things for the village, and I hope you consider rezoning it to the central business district. Thank you.
I'm going to change the subject. Elizabeth Miller, the director for the Downtown Development Authority. You are all cordially invited, you do not have to RSVP, to the Downtown Development Authority Ribbon Cutting Ceremony and Open House in partnership with People Driven Credit Union. It's tomorrow, May 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The ribbon cutting ceremony is at 6:00 p.m. We invite you to come. A lot of volunteers were there today, setting up, and we have food from all downtown. Even Juliette Chocolates is in on it, and it's just, it's even the reverse osmosis water is being used, and so we're pretty excited about that. We hope you all come. And my phenomenal volunteer coordinator, who is Mary Homan, if you don't know her, she's like Martha Stewart of Romeo. She's like, "What if we run out of food?" I said, "Then we'll get pizza." So we'll figure it out. I do have one last thing as, to re, let me try to open my phone back up. And it is in regards to the, to the, to the church property. At the DDA meeting on October 3rd, 2022, there was a motion that passed, and it was at the end. It was a consensus of this board to direct village president, and this is in board minutes, by the way, so this is all public, it's on the DDA website. It is a consensus of this board to direct village president to pursue the purchase of the Congregational Church properties being offered up for auction on October 13th, 2022, and that we respectfully request the DDA boundary to be expanded to include the said forementioned properties, and further that the DDA is willing to help commit, fund the purchase and maintenance of said properties in the amount of $50,000 per year for 10 years. That passed with the As being Melzon, Rose, Hayes, Brant, Parker. There were no Nays. But prior to going into closed session, our now village president left the meeting, so was not part of that meeting. And there were, I think there were a couple other people that weren't present. So at the time, it would appear that it was an interest for the DDA to help expand the DDA boundary. And the village chose not to enter into an auction bid at that time. So I think it's awesome. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Williams. I live at 188 Church Street, about six houses down from the church. My wife and I first became aware of the situation with the church and the back and forth and all the communications only about two weeks ago. We've been here about 10 years. We've been listening to the clock and the chimes like pretty much everyone else in the village, and it's one of the things that attracted us and that we love about it. I hear good points on both sides of this discussion with respect to the change to the CBD, which I understand comes with a lot of questions. Our neighbor to the, to, on our backyard, did talk about other options, potentially with zoning, a consent order or something along those lines. I don't understand the legal proceedings. I guess what I would like to say is that I would like to, we would love to see something happen with this building and that this building be preserved. And I know everybody in here wants to see that building be preserved. So I would just ask you to, if you need to think outside the box, let's please do that. If this is the path we're willing to take and we can put some provisions in place in the case of things going south in the future, I understand those considerations as well. Please, we'll find a solution and preserve this beautiful structure and our clock. Thank you.
Franco Filino, 253 Chandler Street. Good evening, board, and good evening, residents of Romeo. Truly is great to see so much public interest and involvement on the topic of the church and its future. I live at the top of Church Street, and I personally would like to see a positive future for such an iconic structure of Romeo's. The church is a beautiful building, and I hope the council can come to a balanced and suitable agreement for the village and its occupants. As important as the church future is, I'm actually here to speak about a separate major topic at hand, which is the subject of our village's future water rate structure. Last month, the council set out flyers with a proposed water rate structure that was woefully flawed and would have negatively impacted the people in this room and the entire village. My household alone was set to experience an increase in my water bill of at least $500 a year. For a family of four people, I felt that this was outrageous. Throughout the month of April, myself and my counterpart, Mr. Matt Kaufman, who's standing in the hallway, engaged with the council on several occasions discussing the glaring, the glaring errors in the water rate structure and advocating for something that is more equitable, ultimately shielding village residents from unnecessary cost increases in their water bills. Last Friday, President Poznanski sent myself and my counterpart, Mr. Kaufman, an updated rate structure, and I have to say, it does look promising. Specifically, it was extremely promising to see the following. First, separate water rates for the village water system versus the Great Lakes Water Authority system. Second, separate sewer rates for residential zones versus industrial zones. And thirdly, separate rates for village residents versus non-village residents. The final piece of this puzzle is which cost basis the council will decide to adopt. And is that happening tonight, or are you just discussing it tonight? You guys voting on that?
We'll see what the council does at that point? I can't really answer for you.
Okay. As a final act of encouragement, I strongly urge the council to adopt the one-inch meter cost basis. You'll see three different cost bases, one inch, three quarters, and five eighths. Strongly encourage we adopt the one-inch water basis for the village. This rate structure option ensures the most equitable solution for the, for the village residents and eliminates any one resident from subsidizing the costs of another. With the one-inch structure, you will pay for what you use. You're not going to be paying for something that your neighbors not using or using. Pay for what you use. Again, and in closing, please vote for the one-inch basis rate structure, which is the best option. Thank you.
We have one last public comment waiting. Nope, nope. Going once? Twice?
Nathan Bartholomew, 298 North Main Street. I'm in support of changing this. I really appreciate what the RAPS have done so far. As far as leaks, and they've already addressed it. They've spent a lot of money having a company come out and redo the tiles on the roof, which is a very expensive project. There is a tree growing out of it, actually, but they've taken care of that. I'd like to mention that Ida Tenagley is here, Lisa's mom. She owned Fifth Corner Restaurant for many years, yep. And so they know what they're doing. I'm a part-time employee of the Romeo United Methodist Church, and I live on the property as well. I've talked to a lot of people from our church, and they're all in support of that this being changed. And as far as Alcoha goes, we already signed off for the Masonic temple, so that's not going to, that's not going to be a problem with our church. So I would just ask that the board supports the RAPS and what they want to do. Thank you.
Any more public comment? With that, we will close public comment and move into officer reports. Who would like to start?
Who would like to start? Clerk Trapp? Oh, you're writing, sorry.
Yes. In respect of time, I did submit my report to the Board of Trustees at their station, but I did want to announce that on Monday, May 29th, I believe, Memorial Day, we will be having the Memorial Day Parade, starting at 10:00 a.m. at Rawls and ending in the park with the usual ceremonial activities of the local VFW, the high school marching band, the women's auxiliary, and I'm sorry if I'm leaving out a few other items. We are still looking for volunteers to help with placing veterans' flags on the graves. We do have volunteers that have come forward, but we are always welcoming anybody who would be willing to help. If you wanna give, give me a call at the village office or email me. We will be starting that hopefully this Thursday and Friday, weather permitting, and wrapping up the Friday before Memorial Day. Thank you.
And the email is clerk@villagedofromeo.org, and phone number is the 586-752-3565, extension two.
Two.
I never call you. I just yell out.
You just yell, yep.
Okay. Treasurer Miller?
I didn't see the report.
Oh, okay. There you are. I knew you were coming. Okay. My report. Let's see. So let's start with Arbor Day. It was such a successful day. A little rain could not stop all the good things from happening. The Romeo Tree Board, along with the help from Macomb County and Second Nature Brands, who donated the money for all of the trees, almost $10,000, were able to plant 30 trees at Trailside Park. We were honored to also have Mark Hackel and John Palrea, Romeo grad here, in attendance. I wanted to thank KLM Landscaping for donating the mulch, and also to our DPW, who went above and beyond for being on hand to assist with the watering and cleanup, and also took the time to drill the holes that took us quite a good part of the day, as there is still a large parking lot under that property. Amanda Moore Elementary's second graders all went home that day with maple saplings to plant at home to celebrate. We were able to put up a new flag at Village Hall, as our old one was showing some wear and tear, and along with it, we replaced, or we added there the Arbor Day flag in honor of the planting. We plan to trade out that Arbor Day flag soon for a Romeo Bulldog flag to show our pride and support of our community. Regarding budget meetings, we had our three budget meetings on April 11th, 24th, and 25th. We also had special meetings before the 24th and 25th, so that makes, what, the sixth meeting we've had since the last council meeting? Tonight, council, you are presented with the draft budget to date. Engineers and municipal analytics, we had a meeting on April 27th to discuss the road bond work, along with the water and sewer line replacement that will be happening in conjunction with that project. I wanted to ensure that we are also looking and paying attention to what is underneath the road as we replace that road. This also allowed John Kazor from Municipal Analytics to better understand the needs and current state of our system, which then allowed him to better adjust the rates that you just heard mentioned. I was able to finish my Michigan Infrastructure Council Asset Management Planning Champion Course. After 25 hours of educational training over the past three months, I have successfully completed the MIC AMP course. Topics addressed ranged from asset management awareness, introduction to planning and decision-making, all the way to introduction to policy and governance, along other things. The next step from here are the development of an asset management policy, of which I am currently working on and hope to bring a draft before council here at the June meeting. We are also in need of a current, up-to-date asset management plan for our village. Along those lines, there was a Michigan State University Asset Management webinar, of which I invited all of council and the Planning Commission to join in in this free webinar on asset management to understand this path forward. If you were unable to attend or sign up, you are still able to watch the recorded session, so please just reach out to me, and I can share that with anybody who would like, really anybody. My email is president@villagedofromeo.org. Regarding our village boards, in conjunction with our asset management plan, I am looking to bring our village boards and commissions into consideration as we create this plan forward with the asset management. I will be reaching out to the board chairs and inviting them to sit down as a group along with myself to go over what each of the boards envisions for their tasks and roadmap going forward. I was able to have a resident meeting. There were a few residents, you heard one, and a business owner reach out regarding their concerns over the proposed water rates, and they requested a meeting with myself. We were able to sit down and go over their concerns and address them at a couple then special meetings that council had on the 24th and 25th before our budget meetings. Tonight, council has before them the outcome of these concerns addressed with the presentation of adjusted rates to be considered. There are three choices. There, Ford EV Tip, I placed at your table before you came in.
It's that down there. I should leave it in, I remember.
EV Tip stands for Electric Vehicle Transportation Impact Program. That was something I just received this afternoon. This is a branch off of our Ford Planning Committee. So we had our first Zoom call for introductions on April 26th. This is a service being offered for free. By, and it allows us, it's the Michigan Economic Growth Institute. So straight from their website, I pulled so that we could kind of understand what this is here. The institute leverages the University of Michigan's resources, research, technologies, and expertise to foster innovation and create positive economic impact for local, state, and national communities and economies by working with small and medium-sized enterprises. So they are joining with us to provide strategic planning and technical assistance to address the economic disruption due to the Ford plant closure. Just this afternoon, as I said, our senior project manager reached out to start the engagement process with Romeo, and we are looking to meet within the next week or so to get all of those questions, answers, and this started. Regarding our fire and ALS, Chief Witkin invited me to walk the downtown with him as he had some concerns that needed to be addressed. We seem to have multiple buildings downtown with either no visible address displayed at all on the building, or an address that is less than visible. This was definitely concerning for the safety of all patrons and businesses and residents. I was able to verify that the address display is, in fact, addressed in our adopted building code, and I informed Chief Witkin of this information. Going forward, I am trying to formulate a plan to address this with the downtown building and business owners. This obviously isn't gonna happen overnight, but we need to start a process to be able to get visible addresses on our buildings, so that as the fire or ambulances dispatched, they know where to go. Around Village Hall, we hung up some historic photographs of different Romeo homes that had been stored away for a bit. We did that on Friday. Again, thank you to our DPW, they did a very good job. I was able to have a mason, and by mason, I mean like a bricklayer, not a mason, in today to look at the village hall's needs as far as the structural integrity of the building and the need for replacement of the brick and tuck pointing. We have this addressed in our budget, and I wanted, everyone was questioning, we have set aside $35,000 for the maintenance care of the building. Everyone is rightfully so questioning, what are we gonna use that for? So I wanna see if this number is a good target or not. I am trying to get two other masons out to quote. That way, as this money does become available with our next budget, we can start addressing this, and my hope would be by the end of this year. In our meeting room, where you all are patiently sitting, we purchased some new-to-us chairs, and on the afternoon of May 3rd, I spent the time emptying the room of all the old chairs, vacuuming, and then waiting for the arrival of the new and placing them out. I hope, we hope, you all enjoy these chairs. On the National Day of Prayer, I was invited to two events around our community. I started out at Woodside Romeo, where we had a time of worship and prayer, followed by a delicious brunch from Pamela's Catering. This event was sponsored by the Romeo area Kiwanis Simpson Park and the Woodside Bible Church. From there, I had to leave a little early to run over and catch the reception of the Washington Township event back at their township hall for refreshments. From there, I made my way down to Mount Clemens for the Macomb County Business Awards. Romeo, we were honored to have four businesses nominated for awards this year out of all of Macomb County. So I wanted to take a moment to congratulate L&amp;L Products, Mother Earth Spa, The MIT TV, and Melberg Funeral Home. So although we did not take home any trophies, this is a great show of the talent and impact our village is having on Macomb County. Just to point out, maybe some neighboring townships who are even bigger than us didn't have any nominations, and we had four. So I just wanna say, you guys are awesome. Our DDA, as the liaison, report on this. The DDA had two budget meetings, both of which, unfortunately, I had conflicts with my schedule. I had another meeting at the time, and morning schedules is just too crazy. I could not make the morning meeting. The board was able to come to a consensus on the budget and was approved by the board at the May meeting. Council, you have it here at your packet tonight for review and approval, should you so choose. At the May meeting, old business was held regarding the executive director's education opportunities, annual scholarships, and downtown events such as the sidewalk sales, Vintage Fest, which is July 15th, in case you're wondering, and the summer concert series, which will be in the beautiful new park, Music in the Park. New business addressed was a FOIA policy, their 2324 budget presentation, the DDA use of professional services, village tree trimming, correspondence, and donations. The full minutes are in your packets tonight and available on the website as they are scanned into and up for everybody's viewing. I was asked at that meeting to present to council their request to place the little library on village property, which again, you will see on the agenda and in your packet. As Elizabeth has already said, the DDA is hosting their open house tomorrow, Tuesday evening, 5:00 to 8:00. All are welcome, so please stop in and check out the new offices. This is another large topic, the Prospect Street property. This property is the focus of many conversations currently, and I wanted us to just get a recap of where we are and what we know. This property belongs to Romeo Community Schools. They are in the process of selling it to a developer. RCS has done their due diligence and put the property out for bids. They have narrowed it down to a handful of bidders. Superintendent Robinson has informed me that if they stay on timeline, they will present for approval at the May 22nd meeting of the school board, which is just days away, in case you wanted to be there. Given the size of the property and our current ordinances, there is potential for up to 17 homes, only if the alley running through that parcel is vacated by this council. Take that as you may. Otherwise, up to 14 houses are what this parcel will accommodate with the alley intact. All along the way, the village has made it very clear that this property is zoned R1 single-family. And although a developer has a legal right to request rezoning, the master plan does not support any other zoning being applied to this parcel. And as the developers called, we restated that to them and let them know where we stood. The happenings around town, we have Shred Day and May Fest coming up this Saturday, May 20th. Shred Day is a joint venture with Bruce Township and will be held here in this parking lot, right outside the door, from 9:00 to noon. If you are a village resident or a Bruce Township resident, please come. I extend the invitation to all council members here, everybody is welcome, to please join in helping make this event happen. Helping hands are always welcome. May Fest, the doors will be opening at noon. The day includes a spring fair and ORV show, along with a Kid Zone in Vendor Market, open until 8:00 p.m., the live music and a beer tent until 11:00 p.m. And if I could put a plug in, there is a cornhole tournament happening, so you can contact me, I guess, I don't have the information handy. But yeah, that's a fun time. We have our annual Memorial Day Parade, which Clerk Trapp talked about. The parade goes up West St. Clair to the cemetery. Again, I extend an invitation to all of our council members here to attend and participate. Regarding our village parking lots, I have reached out to a local organization who is always up to lending a hand, and they have generously agreed to pay for the mulch for the Southwest and the North Bailey parking lots. However, we do need to put in a little sweat equity here, so if you would like to lend a hand, please come out this Sunday afternoon. That's the 21st at 10:00 a.m. We will just be starting this in the Southwest parking lot, that's the parking lot behind Younger's Office Pub. I have asked Clerk Trapp to reach out. I did also put at your place some pictures, if you would, I went and took those today, to reach out to a landscaping company regarding removing some shrubbery and trees in the North Bailey lot before we mulch it. If you look at that, this parking lot is in some sore need of attention. We currently have nothing in this particular budget set aside. Clerk Trapp is, they were supposed to come remove, the bushes on the North Bailey Street this weekend, so that is getting done. The other large ones growing next to the home that are, lived their life, need to be removed and replaced. I wanted to take a moment to congratulate our 2023 Peach Queens, Ava Lamir and the runner-up Joanna Cowles. We are honored to have you two represent us this season everywhere you go. Regarding our police, who are doing such a fine job tonight, we thank you. We have two-speed, we love you, even if no one else does. Our two-speed radar signs are up and working. If you notice the one coming down here on West St. Clair, and then our other one coming up, Van Dyke. On another note, state police have stopped in, and apparently they are taking an inventory as someone got a new job, the local speed limits, and we are crossing our fingers that they find the necessity, such as we do, to lower the speed limit here on 32 and Van Dyke. Really crossing our fingers there. Regarding the Keyzor Library here in the village, they are allowing us to use their equipment to make copies of our historical documents for free. The Keyzor Archive has a wonderful setup that they have been using to archive the Romeo Observer and have graciously extended the use of it to us. We have many historical documents, of which have yet to ever be duplicated. These originals are the only copy of our history. It is an honor to be able to ensure that our history will continue to be well documented and available for generations to come. To be completely honest, though, I have no idea where the man hours, or woman hours, rather we should say, will be pulled from to accomplish this undertaking, but just having this option to make this happen is the first very big hurdle no longer in our way. So that's exciting. We have, regarding our proposed donated property, we spoke at it one of our special meetings this month. I am meeting with MDOT to discuss the proposed donated property on the 23rd of this month, and will continue to keep the board informed on the progress. This proposed donated property, if you are not familiar, is owned by Chet Zahousky and is locally, is located directly across the street from the Ray Township Airport. Now, it is a strip of land along the creek, so it's down the hill, of which cannot be built on, as it's wetlands. It is also unfortunately landlocked, so this is where MDOT comes in. We're looking into possibly seeing if they, we could garner an access point on their property, so that is the conversation there. One other thing happening around town, we have Prosecutor Peter Lucido coming here. He will be giving a presentation on Senior Scams, which starts, stands for Stopping Crimes Against Macomb Seniors. This will be next Wednesday, May 24th, at 11:00 p.m., just in the other building of Parks and Rec here in the senior silver room, with our road bond, of which you are all graciously paying for. It is continuing to move forward with the selling of our bonds. Treasurer Miller, along with myself, have two phone calls scheduled tomorrow with the bond council to continue these steps. If all continues as it should, the bonds are set to be sold and awarded on June 7th, with the close and delivery of the bonds on June 28th, and we will be progressing with that. That is the end of my president's report. Treasurer, let's move into our trustees. Mr. Bartholomew, did you?
No, the only thing I wanted to mention was, I think that's the Romeo Airport, it's across from Ray Township, is further down towards.
Okay.
Romeo Plane.
Romeo Airport's in Ray Township.
Yeah, Romeo Airport's in Ray Township.
If I misspoke, okay. Thank you.
Most people know it as Romeo. That's all I have.
I'm all set.
I'll just touch base on our planning meeting this month. We discussed a second floor decking going over top the current rear of the Rolling Stream building that was favorable by the Board of, by the Planning Commission to move forward. Looked at the fencing ordinance, and we did discuss the rap proposed rezoning. Planning had no intentions of revisiting it and basically sent it back saying they felt that it would be in the owner's hands to reapply and move forward. That's all I have.
Trustee Fowler? Mr. Care, trustee Care?
No, I just wanna thank everyone for their patience tonight. It says a lot about our community that this many people are out here waiting very patiently on a Monday night for things that they care about. We represent- We represent you guys up here, and I hope that our votes tonight reflect that.
Moving into our committee reports, our Bruce Sewer. We spoke at last month's meeting regarding the Bruce Sewer. I included the two other members, Edwards and Parker, in an email to Mr. Philbrook, laying out where we are and asking him to go forward. I never received an email back. I was able to kind of speak with him at an event we were both at. Not really, it was kind of, that's a lot of money they don't have. I said, okay, well, that's what negotiations are. And I, it was kind of, well, but we don't even have, if you went down a little bit from, what did you ask, 1.2? 1.1 point, whatever, we don't even have 800 or 700. So it was kind of a moot point for them to feel like to negotiate. So if we would like to tonight dissolve this Bruce Sewer Subcommittee, that is up to you guys.
He has no intentions, or they have no intentions of doing anything in the near future?
I, none, at that conversation time, we did not touch anything like that. I've seen things in the paper.
It's as usual, they need an instant answer, then they.
Hurry up and wait?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can leave it on there and it sits here and we say nothing every month, or we dissolve it, or we bring, and then we bring it back when it's needed, whatever you'd like.
Six, one after the other.
I'll make a motion to dissolve the wastewater Subcommittee.
Support.
Okay, motion by Parker, support by Edwards, all in favor of dissolving the Bruce Sewer Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Our Crosswalk Project Committee? Anything?
We have not met, we were waiting for the feedback from the village engineer.
Of which we still have none. I did send an email, I'm just waiting. Okay, into our unfinished business, our Accounting Services RFP. Let me get. I included, I included for us the one response that we did receive. This was posted on the Mitten, right? And only the Mitten. There were a few other inquiries, but Clerk Trap, if they, if they don't subscribe to the Mitten to see it, she does not feel that they should have, because you have to pay to be, to look at that. And so then if people just call and get it for free, anyways, if you're not on the Mitten, you didn't get to see it. Did we post it in the record?
No, because all vendor services, professional vendor services, municipalities traditionally go through a service like such as, it's technically called BidNet Direct is the website, but professional services are through there.
Is there any where else it can be posted so that it's more readily available to other, other people providing this service?
I mean, if you guys want to give direction on where to do that, like I said, though, that website is designed for professional services to seek services and bids.
Oh, that was my question, is there somewhere else we can post it?
I mean, that's up to you guys, we could post it in the.
Responded, it's kind of.
Well, we had some few inquiries, but a lot of the inquiries we had, the organizations felt that we were too small to even bid on. So we can bid, we could post it on the MML website or the local paper.
Some people laughed. Some people laughed at you.
Oh, completely, yep.
What about on our, on our website?
Our website shows that, yeah, it was, I'm pretty sure I put that on there, and it has a link to the BidNet also.
Is there a fee with the MML for people to log on and look at the?
Nope, there is a fee to post the classifieds, though, in the classified section.
Draws the post, but is there a fee regarding outside vendors that want to bid on it? I think I just want to make it more available to.
That I'm not sure, I know members pay a fee to have access, I'm not sure. I'd have to contact MML to find out how they handle non-members, non-MML vendor, vendors, members for accessing the classified section over there.
And we do have, just became a member of the GFOA, or the Michigan Government Finance Association. There's a spot there, but we would have to also pay for that extra?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
That's an add-on.
Yep.
Is there, what's the, what's the timeframe that we have on this?
This expired June?
Time frame for the current agreement with, yes, July 1st, the ending of the fiscal year.
Yeah, at the end of the budget.
Does Macomb County itself have a resource that it can be posted on?
I don't believe so.
Like the exec.
I don't believe they have a classified section for municipalities to utilize.
So I would either ask for a motion regarding this proposal or what step you would like to take forward if you're not going to accept this proposal?
I'd like to see, get it reached more hands and potentially, I mean, we've seen the amounts this comes in at on a monthly basis for approval, should this not be a closed bid? If it's above 10 grand on an annual basis? Which then, I mean, our policy says three bids, at least three, right?
Mark, would we need to reject this to, to go back out, or is that an acceptable, how would you suggest?
It would depend on how it was offered to begin with. Was there a time limit when it was initially offered?
Yes.
And so then my recommendation would be, I have one more question before I make a recommendation. When it was offered, it was not done as a closed bid, correct?
It was.
It was. Then you should reject it, you can start.
You're not on.
I was hoping you wouldn't catch that. If it was done on a closed bid basis, I recommend that you reject it and then you can rebid it or reoffer it. But you, you don't want to look at somebody's numbers and then say, oh, you know, let's keep it open another 30 days and see how somebody else's numbers come in.
Right.
Not a good practice, I recommend against it.
Okay. So just so you're all clear, that would be the steps that you would be deciding.
Right, yes, because it was given a calendar as far as timeframe of when it was released, how much timeframe for questions and addendums, when it was due as a closed bid. And I did a proper bid opening at the timeframe, at the timestamp was, that was offered on there, and we did just have the one submission. Many inquiries, but one submission.
I'll make a motion to reject this.
Support.
Motion by Fowler, support by Bartholomew. Could you please call a roll on it?
Fowler?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes, to reject.
To reject. Russell?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Pozniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yes, please, I would not leave it hanging, because we're done it in July.
I wouldn't say proper, just more.
More available?
Okay.
More, more available notifications.
I'll second.
A motion by Fowler, support by Parker. You're just doing all in favor of rebidding? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have none opposed. You have before you.
I'm sorry, President Pozniewski, can I ask the board then, due to the timeframe that we have the budget approvals coming up and the public hearings for that, and July 1st is fast approaching, are we going to entertain any extension in the meantime while the RFP is going to be live?
Extension of their services is what you're asking?
Correct, yes, while the RFP is live.
Our meeting will be on June 19th, no, are we on the 20th or the 26th?
The following Monday, the 26th.
So we will have our meeting on June 26th, and they will be done that week if. That's your, your call.
So we should have bids back prior to the 26th, so we can review, write in packets on the 22nd, make a decision on the 26th?
There's openings in the contract to extend.
Yes, is between the 26th and July 1st going to be enough time for them to transition if they do not award, get awarded the bid?
To teach the next people is what she's saying.
Should we extend it to 30 days?
So that even if, yeah.
That would make sense. I guess I'd make a motion to extend the Plant Moran contract for an additional 30 days.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who's supportive of that, was it Care or Fowler?
Oh, I'm sorry, so we had a motion by Edwards, support by Care. To extend for an additional 30 days with Plant Moran until July 30th, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? None opposed? So there is that. Where are we? We have our draft budget before us. We do have Plant Moran here tonight. Should we have any further questions? They did include the items we talked about, wanted to see adjusted. You finally see them in form and fruition, so if there are more questions, please let us address them. Do you want me to, kind of a lot, read all the fund, fund adjustments? Do you want to hear it?
No, I don't think we need to hear that, but I've got to go over it. I, I'm happy with the changes.
I have a question about the cemetery fund. It says no capital projects are allocated, but wouldn't that be your road project?
Oh, yes, we can make that adjustment, the road repair project.
Do you know off the top of your head how much you were holding for that?
Off the top of my head, what was that question?
How much you were holding for the road repair?
I believe within the budget, we were holding about 150?
Okay.
Right now, because we're hoping to do it in phases, because we don't have enough to front the entire project.
Okay. And then under wastewater system, there is a requested $100,000 for capital projects that are yet to be determined. Do we have, I know they're yet to be determined, but do we have an idea of where the $100,000 came from? Is that a traditional amount? Have they supplied a list of generally what they're thinking, or?
I think that was in my notes for one of the budget workshops we had. I don't know, I saw Al earlier, but I know we were talking about potentially the parking lot and then a couple other items, but I don't have those notes with me of what I previously passed out at a budget workshop.
I thought we did have a certain amount of capital outlay generally over the years. Was it 100? I don't believe so, but I also know that not as much capital has been spent in the last few years, so I think we bumped it up to kind of, you'll see the item tonight. We have some things that need to be repaired, and that's where also my suggestion to get an updated asset management plan, we would be able to answer what that is for, as opposed to just waiting for it to break and then Al says, we'll use this money in the pot. Anything else to address with the budget, because the next time you see it, it will be for final approval?
Well, one of my other questions is if we still have an undetermined RFP for the accounting firm, how do we account for if that's going to be significantly different?
We would, you adjust the budget.
Budget amendment?
We have, there is a line item in there to hopefully fill.
At a later date.
In an amount.
We don't want to do it up, okay.
We have a base amount in there, and then you adjust as we go forward. It doesn't have to be a, something that holds us back. It won't be as accurate.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I get how that works. I was just curious to know, would that hold this up?
No. No, and I would also, I would probably venture to say that if we just went with what, double what we had in six months and put that in there, that would generally cover us as a good base price.
Yes, I mean, also we can do budget amendments, because there's always going to be moving variables, especially when it comes to contracted services.
Anything else, or these are our directives moving forward, just a couple adjustments. We'll know the DDA part here in a little bit. Okay. I don't think we need a motion on that, we'll, we'll see the rest of it.
Right.
Moving into our church rezoning, so as we move into this here, the decision was made at last month's board meeting. The zoning was denied, I'm trying to get here. So hold on, I have not relinquished the floor. I apologize. I don't apologize. So at that time when we denied it, I did ask this council to please, at that point, come up with a decision at this next month's board meeting. We did make a unanimous motion at that time to send it back to the Planning Commission. We wanted to see a workshop and a discussion with the property owner. The Planning Commission did not want to do that. They did talk about it though at their planning meeting. So here we are. I included in the packet for everybody to kind of give an overview of where we've been. We had the meeting, meeting minutes from January. At that time, the village planner, Mr. Casson, made his review and his recommendation. We have the minutes that this was, motions were made in January, January, February and April at this board level. That was in April, it was denied. There is an email from the current village planner, and there's also in here your master plan and the zoning, CBD zoning and what it all encompasses. I would like to read for you what our village planner has suggested, as somebody at the point of tonight has made. There has got to be a middle ground here. One side or the, I'm sorry, I hear myself talking. There are two different sides. Go for it 100% CBD. Don't do it at all. I believe there is a happy medium to make everybody unhappy, happy enough to cooperate, of which we cannot, at the council, at the village level, we cannot initiate, but I would like to put it out there as an option. Ms. Karen Laver says, I spent some time this weekend reviewing the village's planning code, that was after the Planning Commission, and weighing the options for the applicant for the 102 Church Street property. The applicant might consider applying for a conditional rezoning in the CBD district. The village cannot suggest what conditions they would approve of, so it's up to the applicant on what they think would address the concerns of the village. Based on Romeo's current code, and she underlines all of this, any further site plan review of this property, regardless of what district it ends up in, would likely not be able to address specific operational concerns since there is no use standards outlined for anything like this currently. So time to address these concerns will be this next step. Also, conditional rezoning provides for the fallback of going back to the previous zoning classification if no progress is made by a particular deadline. I know it had been suggested at the Planning Commission meeting to remain, to maintain the R1 classification with a consent judgment. This is a second option. I would have to defer to ask Mark for some guidance on how that process would work, should the applicant choose to go that route. I feel that this may end up essentially a use variance granted by a judge with the village currently, which the village currently prohibits. Mark, I put you on the spot, if, would you explain what that would offer or how that would process?
What's suggested with the consent, excuse me, the consent judgment requires somebody to sue somebody. So in this instance, the way things are postured, the property owner would sue the village claiming that the village, for some reason, some lawful reason, it can't just be some random reason, but the village for some reason denied the rezoning to which the property owner was entitled. Nobody's entitled to a certain specific type of zoning or a particular zoning. So the property owner would sue the village, the village would respond and say, no, the village didn't do anything wrong, you're wrong, we're right, and Judge, please dismiss this lawsuit. Well, the judge may do that, or the judge may say, well, I'm going to keep this on my docket, and both sides discuss this, see if you can work this out before I make a decision whether to dismiss it or grant the property owner the relief they want. If those discussions are, if they bear fruit, then the agreement, if there is one, between the village and the property owner, would be reduced to a judgment. would be reduced to a judgment. It would specify in the judgment that, what the terms and conditions are for the use of the property and the zoning that would apply to the property. That is a doable thing. I don't recommend that, at least not as the starting point to try to resolve the impasse, because when people sue one another, sometimes it goes awry. Once the lawsuit or the litigation is initiated, sometimes things happen that aren't expected, and it becomes difficult for the parties to reach an agreement. So now you'll have somebody, a man or a woman, in Mount Clemens in the Macomb County Circuit Court, wearing a black robe, sitting on a stand higher than everybody else in the room, telling you what you're going to do. And I'm just, as far as good planning, I don't think that is good planning. Do lawsuits arise that result in consent judgments that allocate the use and the zoning of property? Yes, they do. Is it a preferred zoning practice? In my opinion, it is not. Is it something that is used to reach a result? It is, but you cannot guarantee what the result is. And once the toothpaste is out of the tube, it's hard to put it back in. So the consent judgment would involve litigation. It's adversarial with the idea that hopefully it would end consensually, consent judgment, but that's not assured.
You just mentioned that it's not a good place to start.
Where would you suggest a good starting point?
Well, I've spoken to the planner. The email that Mrs. Poznanski read, I had spoken to Ms. Laver before she wrote that. And I've also spoken to the attorney for the property owner. Very casual conversation. It was professional. But there were not, there were no specifics that were discussed. I think what the planner has suggested is the better course for both sides. I'm primarily concerned with the village, because the village is my client. But based on the participation of people here, the interest here, the passion that people have, certainly the property owner's interests need to be considered as well. And so as the planner states, the property owner can make some suggestions. If you, meaning the village, if you'll rezone the property, we'd be willing to do A, B, and C. The village cannot suggest those conditions, nor can it require those conditions. But I think the more productive place to start would be to have, as the planner suggests, and there may have been other people involved in the process that had suggested it as well, that the property owner sit down, maybe with the planning commission, probably not, maybe a little unwieldy, but I think the planning commission should be involved, but probably with one or two representatives of the council. You don't want to have a quorum. I think the village president, Mrs. Poznanski, should be involved. Maybe Mrs. Wilson, who administers the building ordinances in the village. Probably Mr. Bomarito, your building inspector, would be an excellent resource person. And so I think it's better accomplished, or at least I recommend that, the process to hopefully end in the goal that everybody wants to achieve. The village needs to protect the community and the surrounding neighbors. The property owner should have the ability to use the property in an appropriate manner to achieve those goals. I think the conditional zoning is the approach that should be taken, and I recommend that.
What do you mean by conditional zoning?
Well, the zoning, if granted, would be based on conditions offered by the property owner and accepted by the village, so that it would, and I don't want to give examples, because again, the village cannot suggest the conditions. But if the property owner came to the village and said, we'll do A, B, and C if the village will rezone the property to a particular use. It might not be Central Business District. There might be another zoning that would be more appropriate. I'm not suggesting that there is, but you should consider that. And so the property owner would initiate what limitations they may be willing to accept if the village were to rezone it. There is included in your package, an excerpt from the zoning ordinance particularly related to the CBD. And it's been mentioned, and I understand it very well. I've known Mrs. Tanaglia most of the time I've been in Romeo. And in the interest of full disclosure, at one time she named a sandwich after me. And I was very, I was, I was very proud of that. And so I understand people's personal commitment, and that's good. But zoning goes to the property. Zoning does not go to an individual. The zoning to a property stays with the property, whether Mr. and Mrs. Rapp keep the property for one year, ten years, sell it, whatever happens, the zoning stays. And so you want to focus on what it will be available, or what uses are available, or can be, or are permitted, based on your zoning ordinance. And if you look at the CBD, there are zero lot lines. There's a whole array of uses that have really nothing to do with what's being suggested. Again, not a bad thing. I just suggest you maybe broaden the consideration a little bit to see if there's a more appropriate zoning under this conditional zoning framework than Central Business District. But there may not be. I don't want to send you down a rabbit hole, but it's all doable. You just have to start on the clearest, most definite path to get to the end where you want to be.
Isn't that exactly where we were last month, though? That's when Mr. Fowler came up and said he was going to look in with the planning commission, the whole mixed usage zoning. And the planning commission has basically just said thumbs down to that.
Well, that.
So now that puts it back to R1 or CBD?
Well, no. It puts it back, because the council considered the Central Business District zoning or rezoning twice, and it was turned down twice, once in February, once in April.
Based on, based on two conditions each time, where the council made a promise that if they do this, the lot joining, this, that, that they, that we would come back the next month and pass it.
I would argue that the council.
And each month.
Excuse me, please let Mr. Clark answer the question.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt Mr. Edwards. Go ahead.
But at each month, we come back with a new reason why we have to put it off for another month, another month. I mean, this is going to go on for quite a while, and these people are going to lose their whole summertime period. And they're not going to be able to make any revenue this, this season.
Well, I don't think that's necessarily a question for.
Well, I'm not asking a question. I'm making more of a statement at this point.
Okay.
I mean, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve rezoning this property to CBD.
I would, I would question if that can happen.
I'm not a policymaker. I don't vote. I wasn't elected to office. So I want to be very careful. You pay me for my legal advice, and that's what I want to give you. I would strongly caution you against voting on a motion to rezone it tonight for a couple of reasons. Primarily, as I mentioned, it's been turned down twice already. There is a procedure for rezoning a piece of property, most of which, in fact, as far as I know, all of which were followed prior to the February consideration. You have to have a public hearing. You have to post it. People have to have the ability to comment on it, positively or negatively. The planning commission only makes recommendations. The planning commission had the public hearing, as far as I know. The council's entitled to have a public hearing. But somebody.
I think we have a public hearing.
But you can't, you can't have a public hearing that lasts in perpetuity. They had a public hearing. The planning commission made a recommendation, and for whatever reason, the council turned it down. And again, you voted on it. That's your vote, and the vote stands. So now it's, it's R1C, which it's always been. It never changed. It never changed. And the recommendation doesn't change the zoning. And so I would caution you against voting to rezone it tonight when you've already denied it twice. There's been no public hearing related to this request. It's new. It's old in the sense that same property, maybe same information you've been presented with before, but as it stands before you tonight, it's brand new. There is no recommendation from the planning commission. There's been no public hearing held. You can vote on it. You can make the motion, get the support, and vote on it. But I caution you, and I would recommend against doing that.
I support Matt Edwards' motion.
So we have a motion by Edwards, support by Care.
Can we have just a little bit more discussion, please?
I just, I would like to know, has there been another request written or given to the village for rezoning after the initial was denied last month?
I have not received anything or know of.
No, I have a question about that. Planning commission members, were they asked to rezone the parcel? Or were they asked to be a part of the Central Business District? Because that's two different topics.
Can you rephrase your, I'm not.
Were they asked to do a rezoning of the parcel to commercial? Or were they asked to be a part of the Central Business District? That's two different processes. That they're, just to clarify what you guys would be discussing and voting on.
Are you asking what their motion is?
No, I'm asking what the application said. You were, the ex officio was trustee Fowler and Care.
The original.
Was it to rezone the parcel or to become a part of the Central Business District?
To become a part of the Central Business District.
Here, let me read.
Okay, I was just clarifying.
Let me read Mr. Casson, because Mr. Casson would not have given a recommendation.
Just to clarify, because if we have to redo it, but nothing else has been submitted since their initial submission.
So there was a public hearing held on January sixth. So public hearings go along with rezoning? The purpose of the hearing is to review and consider the rezoning, oh, nope, to review and consider the rezoning of 102 North Main. So there you go.
To the rezoning, no, they have not resubmitted any application for reconsideration.
So we're making a motion to rezone something that currently isn't being asked to be rezoned, because it was denied. I know it's clerical, but I think that's where.
It was asked. But several times.
It was denied.
At the last planning meeting, you had brought it to them, and I can only paraphrase, but Mr. Stegner, Chair Stegner, said that he doesn't want to get in the habit of making a decision on something and having it keep coming back. He said, we made a decision to move forward with this. We recommended that the village go with this, and that's where he wanted to stand.
The planning made a, made a recommendation, yes.
Well, and I see the validity in that statement, and I would think that would stand here at council table also.
Ms. President, can we have a representative of the property speak?
Does the council wish to go forward? Would you like?
Yes.
Wouldn't that have been public comment time?
Ms. Sun, hi. My name's Carly. I am here speaking on behalf of my mom. She is out of town in our state right now, traveling for work, so she can't be here, but she is watching live, so that's great. I think all of you got an email from her. I think it was on the twelfth, the last week Thursday. She sent it to this entire board, as well as Cindy Olson, the planning commission, and the village planner. So I just wanted to take this quick moment to go through a couple of the concerns that she had mentioned in that email, but like, we can just talk about it in an open discussion, if that's okay. The first concern was by Justin Parker. You had shared some concerns about the side yard and the rear yard setbacks. So I just want to clarify that. So on the north side, the church property has seventy-three feet and six inches from the church building to the next owner. So per the Central Business District zoning ordinance, it says you only need fifteen feet. So we well overmeet that by almost five times. Your other setback concern was the west side, and that we have seventy-seven feet and five inches. And that setback requirement is twenty feet from the next residential zoning, and we have almost four times that. So I hope that that kind of clarifies a little bit of your setback concerns. The next concern, there's only, I'm just going to tell you upfront, there's seven concerns. I'm not going to read through her email. I'm just kind of giving some pointers on it, because it's a long email. The next concern was also shared by Mr. Parker about the house surrounding the parking lot. I'm not going to like restate it, but it was, actually, I can talk about Amanda. But I know that Amy was here a little bit ago and spoke. She's the house on the north. And she was in support of us doing this. Our property pretty much like lines right up with theirs. The other homeowner is Amanda Lemrise. She did send you all an email with a letter. It was dated April twentieth that she submitted. I'm not going to read that to you, but two important points that she made was, one, she bought the property knowing that it was going to be surrounded by a parking lot and next to a church. And the other part of that, was that was important, was in her closing statement, she said, "All this to say, I couldn't ask for a better neighbor, and I'm so excited for 102 Church Street to be full of life again. I can't wait for the meeting notes to say that the rezoning has been approved." The other resident was Amy, so I'm not going to go through hers, because she spoke herself. Gary and Charlotte Miller at 148 Church Street, which is the west of the Historical Society. The back of their property touches the west back end of the church property. And they did air some of their own views at the planning commission hearing in January. And I did notice that that letter was in the sport packet as well. However, after receiving like Zach Fowler's letter that you had in the mail, and my parents' flyer they had to put together just to make sure that like their voice was heard as well, she sent an email to my mom. I do have a copy of that. But all in all, she did say that she was secretly hoping, since the moment this went up for sale, that it was going to become a wedding venue. I have a copy of that email. If you would like to see it, I can have it forwarded to you. And then the last one is the Felcheck family, which is, sorry, 301 North Main. They'd not made a comment on this topic publicly that we are aware of. However, Nick is doing some restorations of the church and likes her plants. So I know that, Zach, you had said at the April meeting that, like regarding the Millers, that we had like con, my parents had like condered voice, but my parents never, I just want to make it clear that my parents never contacted the Millers, ever. It was never in contact. The only contact with the Millers was this last email. It was a couple days ago.
I have a question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
How do we get there, your event center, without the CBD zoning?
You can't.
How do we get there?
You cannot.
And that's, that's what the, that's what the attorney was just saying. There has to be some compromise somewhere.
Okay.
And not for the Central Business District zoning there, but I am for your event center.
Okay.
But if you can get there other than that zoning, I'm there.
So there was six mentions of support between January and February meetings, and I am going to take this time to speed this, reinstate those. President Poznanski, it wasn't really a motion of support. It was actually just, she repeated the planning commission's unanimous approval and recommendation that said contingent upon the combining of the lots, the rezoning request would be approved, but combining has to be done first. At this time, it has not been done. We're going to table it until the info has been presented that it was done. The next comment was by, or sorry, trustee Fowler, saying, "You jumped ahead a little bit. You just need to get the properties joined, and then bring it to us, and we can give you approval." You also stated, "I support you, and I'm still supporting you. Please get your ducks in a row."
And you talked about mixed use.
Yep, and you had my vote.
Yes. How do we get there?
So the mixed use was never discussed in January or February meetings. It was only discussed in the April meeting that neither of my parents were able to attend. Mixed use was never discussed, and I just spend all my time going through those. The other couple ones that I wanted to just mention, there was three other comments of support. President Poznanski said, "To Zach's point, I don't think we're against it. It's just that we're asking you to combine the lots first." And then I might botch your last name. I think it's, is it Russo? Russo?
Russo.
Russo, okay, sorry. You had said, "In light of our village attorney suggesting that we wait until the lots are combined to approve, it would be a concern of me and Nate." You were discussing this with Nate. "But I believe you are speaking for the planning commission, and it was unanimous that everyone supported this. It's just that the, we, the reps need to follow the same process that everyone else does and follow the recommendations." And the other one that you said was, "The planning commission has supported it. I don't think any of us are not supporting it."
We like the activity that you propose. How do we get there without the CBD?
All of this was discussing about the Central Business District.
How do we get there without that?
That's not the applicant's concern.
And that's what Mr. Clark was just saying. Party sit down and work something out. It is possible.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, though, these mentions of support were all about, they were not about the, you actually had a conversation with Russo. If you just give me a moment to find that one, right here. I said Russo, sorry, Russo. She asked you, "Did you ever tell them that you were, you were for CBD?" And you said, "No." Which is why, for sure, by now, you all can understand that it's been mentioned several times, that you did state you were for CBD. The other conversation that was said was between Mr. Edwards and a couple people, so Parker. Edward said, "We told them to get the lots united, and we will approve it. We told them that." Mr. Parker said, "No, we didn't." Edward said, "Yes, we did. It's right in the notes." President Poznanski said, "That's in her, that's her email." You were pointing at an email that my mom had sent to you. And Edward said, "I'm certain that we told them that." Well, Mr. Edwards, you're right. Everyone did, on four occasions, say they support it publicly, the Central Business District, and it's recorded on the MIT TV. it publicly, the Central Business District, and it's recorded on the MIT TV.
Once we start doing our homework on what Central Business District is...
Okay.
It's too drastic for that spot.
So why was it not drastic in January? Why was it not drastic in January when you supported it, but why is it drastic now?
Because I've done my homework on it now.
Why didn't you do the homework on it? You're on the board, why didn't you do the homework? You do the homework now? Five months later, you did the homework? Dang!
When it first proposed, Jeff Raff...
Okay, we're going to have order in this room, or we... Hold up, hold up. We're all going to have order... Mr. Fowler, we will have order in this room. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not want to have to take the authority of...
Thank you.
Right.
I appreciate that.
We will have order to address your comments, for myself. Absolutely, I cannot or will not deny what I have said.
Thank you.
But who in here has never changed their mind? It is part, it is part of my job...
Hey, excuse me, on behalf of the board in this meeting, I would also appreciate if we all keep it down so we can have an open and clear communication discussion. Thank you.
It is part of my job to listen to you. It is part of our job to listen to the people, such as, you will see later with your water rates, we listen to you, and we weigh the options, we weigh the hard things. This isn't easy. If I wanted to do the easy thing, I would just give you absolutely what you wanted, no holds barred, nobody cares about the village. That's the easy thing.
Come on, who's in second?
To me, my job is to listen to the residents, look at this zoning, we have to peel off that layer. So, in the CBD, let's go over what is allowed in the CBD district. Once this goes through, this is what is allowed there. Not horrible things, but this is what is allowed. Antique shops, art supply stores including picture framing, art galleries and studios, bakeries, banks excluding drive-through facilities, barber shops and beauty salons, bicycle sales and repair shops, book and stationery shops, camera and photographic supply stores, carpet rug and linoleum showrooms with limited onsite storage for merchandise, catering businesses, china and glassware shop, clothing, men, women, children, and accessory shops, coin and stamp stores, custom dressmaking and millinery shops, department stores. That's pretty open-ended, department stores. Drugstores, you want a Rite Aid there in 50 years? That's pretty open-ended, you guys. Electrical and house appliance stores, ABC warehouse, florist shops, convenience and specialty food stores, that kind of sounds like maybe Whole Foods, furniture and other household accessory stores, gift shops, hardware stores, do we need another ace? Hobby shops, jewelry shops, leather goods and luggage sales, locksmith shops, musical instrument shops, musical and record shops, office supply, that's a big box store, printing, restaurants or lounges specifically excluding establishments with drive-through windows, thank goodness, schools for music and dance, shoe repair stores and other small item repair shops, sporting goods stores, Dick's, Dunham's, tailor shops, tobacco shops, toy stores, Toys R Us, travel agents, upholstery shops, village service buildings such as office and administrative, professional and business offices, excuse me, paint and wallpaper stores, video rental, I think we're good with that, interior decorators, private clubs and lodges, offices and showrooms of plumbers, electricians, decorators of similar trade, auto parts stores, other specialty retail shops. Then it addresses off-street parking, gymnasiums, health clubs, billiard halls, arcade, other similar indoor. Then we go into, let's see, minimum lot size, the area is none, the width is none, the maximum building height, three stories, in feet, it's 40, minimum building floor area, none, minimum yard setbacks per lot, front, none, all buildings shall be built at the front property line with no front yard setback, side, none. Where a yard, where a side yard setback borders a residential district, a setback of 15 feet shall be provided. So 15 feet from where is your lot line, you will have three stories, potentially 20, 30, 50 years from now.
Why would that happen?
That is what is allowed in the Central Business District.
But the...
So a rear is 20 feet if there is no alley.
Right.
The maximum coverage is 100%. 100% as modi... Except as modified by the setback and parking requirements of this chapter. So this is what this council is weighing here, this Central Business District. This has, it is not the raps, it is not the developer...
Thank you.
This is what we're weighing. And this concerns, where is our master plan? It addresses, of which everyone on this council approved, other than trustee Russo, because even at that time, trustee Care, you were on the Planning Commission, and you approved that master plan. That zoning does not go north. Similar as we held to at a different time, does everybody remember the Meldrum Brothers, who wanted to rezone single-family into multi-family at the corner there? Is there most people following? That was one zoning jump. The Planning Commission denied it, the council denied it on multiple occasions. This zoning wants to jump more than one. Even our planner has advised against it, this council has made a decision against it.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we're at.
So...
So at this time, I believe we're done. You have your motion?
Can we not continue discussion? Is your argument against the Central Business District as a whole? I mean, there's nothing from stopping bushamis from becoming the biggest three-story family dollar in the country.
Thank you.
If your argument is against the Central Business District, then it could be the office pub, it could be anything.
It could be.
So what's the problem?
I guess back to the master plan, right? When we all approved, page 40 talks about preserving the historic neighborhoods. It has a future land use map. You talked about rezoning, the definition's in here, have you read it? Right? There's a lot of things in here that is not supported, that doesn't support this project. And I think by expressing the concerns that I expressed, and I don't know, I don't think I ever said I approved it, and by saying that the board...
I agree with that, I never said that you didn't.
By saying that the board said something, that means the whole board would have had to vote to say that, right? Individual people on a board can say something, but it doesn't mean the board said that.
Right, I don't think if I said that, I misspoke. I don't think I said that the board said that.
I don't think I ever supported it. Initially, I heard the plan, I thought, "That's a great idea."
Mm-hmm.
I thought, "Cool," and then I started thinking about where it was happening.
You actually were the one person that didn't, you're correct, you did not make a mention on that, so I am not arguing that.
It's tough. We all know each other, we've grown up with each other, and to take the personal out of it, right, you got to look at it as ABC Business, not ABC warehouses, ABC Business is coming to the village, asking for this, this is what we have, we have master plans to follow, we have zoning, we have setbacks, we have things to consider.
So the setbacks are just...
And I don't think anyone wants to say, "No, 100%," but 100% into the Central Business District opens up so many concerns for future, right? I know in your mother's email, asked us to look at the today.
Okay.
And while we can, we have to also, as stewards of the village, look at the future, and look at what the ramification could be moving forward, right? That's why I expressed concerns...
Yeah.
And asked for a response from that, not an email, I think Mr. Clark addressed, coming back with a work group.
Actually, I think you both are just, both of you actually mentioned that, and president Poznanski, all three of you requested to do a work group with the village planning commission, village planner, this council, and my parents. Is that correct? I think that the real...
To some, to...
To some extent.
Some extent, yes.
That there be a work, a discussion amongst everybody.
It was brought back to the planning.
Right, and that email...
Planning, there wasn't, doesn't seem to be a...
The whole council, the whole council approved that motion.
So that email, yeah, it was, April 17th meeting, you're correct, everyone approved them, that planning, going back to the planning commission. But the email that my mom received from April 20th from Cindy Wilson states, "Good morning. After consideration of the circumstances, in consultation with experts and others, Chairman Stegner has made the decision for the meeting to be canceled. In January, the Planning Commission made their rezoning recommendations to the village council, which was to grant CBD. Therefore, it is now in the hands of the village to make the final decision on this matter." Meaning, I took this, and I think my parents took this as well, as they still stood by their recommendation. And speaking of that, I'd like to see, is there a, in the last, let's say, five years, how many times have we gone against the Planning Commission's recommendation? Actually, sorry, in January, president Poznanski, you called my mom, and you guys discussed after the January 17th meeting, my mom said, "Hey, I think the board's kind of strong-arming me." And you said, "Oh, no, no, they're not strong-arming you, they just want to make sure the lots are all combined, the parcels, sorry, are combined before we give you Central Business District, that's all."
I just wanted to add a couple more things.
I could address your concern about it going back to planning.
So it didn't go back because they canceled it?
Yes.
Right.
So I was a little off with that. The reason I was trying to send it back to planning...
Yeah.
Was because the vote was forced, it was denied, so it would have, my thought it would have to go back to planning. The step I did miss, which I reached out to Cindy and asked her to reach out to the owners...
Okay.
Was that, "You guys have to come back to us now. It's in your court, because it was denied."
But this says...
So for us to form a work group to discuss zoning...
Okay. So, thank you for clarifying that, thank you for clarifying that.
I hope that that was done.
So the only email that I'm aware of, and again, I am only speaking on behalf of my mom, and I'm sure she's watching right now, and I wish she could text me and tell me, you know, "Hey, I'm listening and this is the situation," but the only email my mom has received was that "It is now in the hands of the village council to make the final determination on this matter," it was from Cindy Wilson, that agreeing, sorry, I'm just a little frustrated up here, bear with me.
You're fine.
So it says, "Therefore, it is now in the hands of the village council to make the final determination of this matter. Nothing else came to it, so that's why we're at this meeting, after that meeting saying we have to do the discussion, we're here."
When was that email? I apologize.
This was April 20th, it's a Thursday, 11:30 a.m., and it was sent to, I can see if your name's on here, your name, it kind of, my print kind of cut off, but is it Jay, yeah, Jay Parker? So your email is on here, April 20th. To this, like, cancellation, and that, like, I'm truly wondering, in the last four to five years, how many times do we go against the village planners and the Planning Commission's recommendation? They are appointed and paid by residents' tax dollars to give their expertise, and like, honestly, should we foil that? Should we see, like, when was the last time we went against their recommendation?
Ms. Teens, around a couple times. She made it very clear that the planning commission just offers a recommendation.
Well, but also, our current planner did make a recommendation, and she did offer that we could do a conditional rezoning in the CBD district.
So this says, in Ja... I'm going to repeat it one more time, just so, or maybe, maybe I didn't say it clearly the first time, so I'll get a little closer to the mic for you. "After consideration of the circumstances and consultation with experts and others, Chairman Stegner has made the decision to cancel the meeting," which was supposed to be April 27th, which was after the last village meeting. "In January, the Planning Commission made their rezoning recommendation. Therefore, it is now in the hands of the village council."
Yeah, so I would question that Chairman Stegner had the authority to, yes, cancel a special meeting. I don't feel he had the authority to not address the issue. That's why I attempted to add it to the regular scheduled planning meeting to try to move this along.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Of which this council asked them to look at in the motion last month.
Okay, so where we're at right now...
I don't believe I received that email...
Of this one?
That statement.
Let me just double-check. President@villaromeo.org?
Correct.
April 20th, Thursday, 11:30.
That was from Cindy, correct?
Cindy Wilson.
Saying that...
Forwarding it to...
I guess that's where some of the disconnect is. The planning commission can make a recommendation, they can't make demands or tell us, "This is what you're going to do," right?
Well, but they recommended it.
So for him to cancel it, I disagree with that, that action, and I apologize that effort.
And I would like to just take the moment and call a point of order and let us move forward here.
I do want to say, my parents can just come...
We're done, we're going to call a point of order.
I'd like for my parents to go back to discuss it, and they may come to you.
I'm sorry, I'm calling a point of order, we're going to take a vote on the motion.
Trustee Edwards, can you repeat your motion, please?
My motion is to rezone 102 North Main Street...
No, Church Street.
Church Street to Central Business District.
The support was Care.
Yes, all right, we'll call vote. Edwards?
If I could real quick ask...
We have a point of order, we're making a vote.
All right, Edwards?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
President Poznanski?
No.
Russo?
No.
Motion fails, 3-4.
I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion, please.
Make a motion.
I'm listening.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess, it is 9:42, we will come back at 52.
Unbelievable. Can we get to finish this discussion?
You just keep stringing these people along, month after month after month.
When we come...
And now they're scrutiny.
Ms. President, is this a pretty big time concern for the police in the middle of the summer? I know roofing season is at full force right now. I don't want to just, we've already kicked the can down the road one month.
The concern is, to Chief's point, almost a $200,000 phone system going in and we have a questionable roof above it. It seems, a roof of which we could fix with 10 to 13,000 dollars to save the $200,000 potentially phone system. We moved it a month. I called three other places. Some places won't call you back, some just kind of said, "No, we don't do that." Tried to get us more bids. This is where we're at.
So where is it suggested, first of all, who's going to write the spec? Because I'm not a tradesman, I don't know what is needed. And then where are we posting this?
So we want an RFP for it?
I'm making a suggestion, we already have a motion on the table.
Right.
If I make a motion after that fact, then, or if this motion's been withdrawn and we make another motion, then we can move forward, or me and Zach can reach out to other roofing companies and see what's up.
And do what the President has already done?
What's happening?
And do what the President has already done, reached out to roofing companies? She's already done that.
To obtain three bids, per our policy, like I continually try to support.
Well, I'm staying with my motion then. I mean, to come back and say, "Well, we might have to do a little bit more," whatever. I'm looking at having that phone system in there and having them do the job.
Yeah, I still support it. My motion stands.
Is your, is it still open-ended, though? That makes me nervous to have an open-ended price.
No, to the amount that they put on the bid.
Ninety-five hundred?
Okay.
So anything additional, they'll have to come back?
Something we'll have to reapprove?
In the middle of a roofing job?
In the middle of the project?
Can we include, not to, the capacity, the 25 sheets, $2,500, so 12,000?
That's my concern, is that it puts it over the threshold in our policy.
And then we have to go out?
Okay, we vote on the motion and then discuss over actions. Because Nathan's got a motion on the table.
Okay.
Could you please state it?
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Parker?
No.
Motion carries four-two.
Okay. Moving into...
I think that was three, right?
Four-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, four-three. Yep, my bad. Motion carries four-three.
Into our water rates. Before you are three recommendations, of which came back from Mr. Kesar. You saw there on that first page, his explanation of the three different. He did send me a follow-up email just today. He says, "I wanted to follow up regarding the rates I sent last week. I provided rate options based on three different meter sizes as the base for calculating the ready-to-serve rates." He puts this in bold print. "I believe the best option is to use the three-quarter basis and include all single-family residential customers with a meter size up to one inch in the three-quarter ready-to-serve rate." That is the first option that we have. Is that, which one has them all at the same? So this is, that is the first one that you see there. The rationale for this is largely due to the information we learned that most or all of the one-inch single-family meters in the village connect to an internal plumbing system of three-quarter piping. So the meter size exceeds the capacity of the system within the home. Single-family residential customers with meter sizes over one inch would be charged the ready-to-serve based on their actual meter size. Residential duplexes served by a single meter would be charged a single ready-to-serve based on their actual meter size. Multifamily, commercial, institutional, and industrial customers would be charged a ready-to-serve based on their meter size. Ready-to-serve charges do not apply to dedicated fire suppression system meters. The base charge for irrigation meters would be one inch, as we've put in our ordinance. Irrigation meters would be charged only for water. And then, that's the end of that. So, such as the resident that stood up and spoke, the recommendation, and what seems most favorable is the, that's the first one, on the back of the...
The one-inch pieces?
Where all residents with a five-eighths, three-quarters, and one-inch would be paying 23 and 65, which is six, seven, eight, 85 base fee than usage.
Could you just clarify what you read from the email? Because I thought you said he recommended the three-quarter.
Well, what this table, if you read his explanation on the front, the first table, the basis for this is used on the three-quarter inch.
Oh, see, I thought that's what the second one was based, what a three-quarter basis is the next top heading.
Well, if he did, then he misspoke.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I believe the best option is to use the three-quarter basis. What is?
Which that would be the second page.
Well, but then he continues to say, "Which includes all single-family customers with a meter size up to one in the same three-quarter rate." So somewhere in there, there's a misspeaking. He mean, the one that is all the same.
That's, okay, that's what I was looking for, Claire, sorry.
So the one on page two is what?
No, no.
The one on...
The first one, the first table.
Correct. It does say page...
We're all residential under...
It does say page two at the bottom of it, though, you're correct.
Oh, I see. First option, page two.
Page two.
Yeah.
So that is the recommendation. That is what seems to be the most favorable. I do like how now we have our systems completely separated and accounted for and being paid for by appropriate. As Great Lakes water is higher, they use more. He even put in here, the residents have been subsidizing that for a while.
I mean, you seem to have the lingo down. Would you mind making this motion?
What would Great Lakes water be paying?
For their meter size, yes. I don't, this does not adjust the usage fee.
Okay.
See, so I believe, though, the industrial, if that's the uses for the industrial park, I believe the industrial park's all on Great Lakes, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So that would be the...
It's whatever, yes, Great Lakes is...
Then I would be the rates at the bottom.
And I have inquired going forward, with Ford coming off of the system or hardly using it, we cannot, Great Lakes will not entertain renegotiation until November, so I have that in my calendar to get that started when the time allows. So, okay, let's make the motion to go with the rates, the water rates going forward, where, as he says, the residential customers with a meter size up to one inch all pay the same. And after one inch, it goes, I don't even, the tables don't have. Presented on page two in the packet.
I'll support.
Second.
Hello?
Okay, do a roll call vote?
Yep, one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion by Parker.
Yeah, I thought you made the motion.
Oh, I made the motion, support by Parker.
Woo, it's after ten.
The cost for the, for the...
So the basis will be 23 and 65, so eighty, 85 is the ready-to-serve fixed cost. So you will spend $85, even if you use zero. That is where that's at.
That's your quarterly.
Which then also alleviates those that had one inch that were paying more, the need to change the meters backwards. So then it alleviates having to get the plumber, get the permits, and get a new meter in there. You call the roll, call the roll?
Yep. President Poznanski?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Care?
Excuse me, yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Okay, we have our village vehicle sale. There's no information, nobody bid, there was a couple laughs, few chuckles.
I'd make a...
So the police have said, "Well, hey, we would use it if it was up. They would use it at the liaison to park at the school. Doesn't need to really go anywhere on long distances to the school." So if we want to sell it, or we would like to take that option, that's up to you.
I would just assume share the wealth with the police department.
Last one, did the work still need to be done?
We did not do the work. Chief says he probably wouldn't even do the work.
If, if it's not going to be sold, if nobody's going to offer you any money for it, or minimum amounts of money, which I think is all you're going to get anyways, swap out the stickers on it and use that as the school resource card, it doesn't even fix it's going to have problems.
Would there be any concern, Chief, now that it's not suited with, you know, emergency response, light sirens, and anything like that? I'm sure the radios have come out, you guys probably carry personal, you might not need an inboard radio. But if he had to respond from, from the school to a scene?
If some of the school, he's got a radio on his, on his step, we would, we play on by a temporary light anyways, because we use that car and sometimes during breaks.
Okay.
And...
So you guys would be able to take it out of your budget, equip it with what it would need if he needed to get somewhere urgent?
Yeah, I could get it at a low cost, you know, but it's not going to be a lot, you know, you wouldn't spend a $2,900 to fix it, as far as the suspension and all that stuff. You know, it's noise you can make, exhausts, but, like that.
So if it would be responding to emergency scenes, would we need to look at suspension or anything for stabilization, anything that would create a...
It has resource on you to that.
Okay, gotcha.
I like that idea.
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion to give it to them?
Just, we don't need to take any work going forward.
Hey, two cars better.
Okay, so no action going forward with that?
Nice.
Yep.
Good solution.
Our investment policy update, this is brought back to us this month from our treasurer. The only thing adjusted is taking out of the language, the group that...
Just the, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Just the name for the financial entity, since I didn't have an actual good definition for that, but I was thinking, page three, what I added, the performance and evaluation reporting, would kind of suffice for that.
I like it.
So if this works, is sufficient?
Mark, have you reviewed this?
I have.
Any concerns?
No, I expressed my concerns, I believe, in, wasn't at the April meeting, except by telephone.
Yeah, okay.
In any event, I expressed my concerns, they seemed to be, they seemed to be addressed. I think that was the only concern I had, and I think this is fine.
Okay, so we needed a motion, then?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt the village investment policy updates?
With updates, yeah.
Support.
A motion by Parker, support by Edwards, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. We move into our new business, our wastewater treatment purchase request here.
Didn't you add H? Sorry, what? You added an H.
H.
No, sorry, I didn't write it on my own agenda. H under unfinished.
You got one more.
We need to figure out what we're doing with that large step-off where we put the bike rack that we don't use as a bike rack in front of the Masonic Temple. I don't know if we want to get a committee together, I don't know. The only creative idea that has struck me since then, which again depends on height, as you're turning around that corner, is a wayfinding sign. That's something that's tall enough, could be put there.
What's a wayfinding?
It tells you, it's a map of the village and where to find things, and you are, and a you are here.
Uh-huh.
And of which you can put brochures and advertisements and such. Again, kept it a low enough, I'm thinking basically rectangle, low enough, but high enough that it's at, you know, not falling over.
It would suffice, I guess.
I don't know. That's the only creative idea I've been able to...
We put the little library there?
I'd still like to see the feedback from the village engineer, and then also probably run something like this by him also, to see if it would suffice as a barrier.
So again, would the Crosswalk Project Committee like to take that on? I'm good with you guys taking that on. Unless there's an opposition and somebody else would like to...
Is there a timeframe that we have to do something? Because I would still like to wait until we have feedback from our engineer on solutions. Because if that stuff is going to be fixed properly, we might not need nothing. If that's the way the board decides to go. Because I mean, it's...
Motion to table?
It's dangerous. I've seen people with wheelchairs down there now, and multiple people having to push them up the ramp, and it's, it needs to be addressed. Not just there, other areas with these crosswalks. I don't think we can continue just to brush it off. So the sooner we can get a feedback from the engineer, I think is important.
If it's that dangerous, sir, can we just put a caution construction cone there in the meantime, until you guys get the answers you need from the engineers?
I mean, you're talking about blocking off the sidewalk. I mean, it's not just that step, I mean, you've got the inclines there.
It's dangerous, it's dangerous.
You've got the inclines by the, was it the River God Church? You've got the fall-offs there. I mean, there's a lot of potential for accidents.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you don't necessarily want to come up creative solutions, you want it fixed?
If that's what the engineers are saying, that this is, if part of fixing that slope requires lowering the grade by the Masonic, I know we're just talking about one area, to lower that step to alleviate the slope, then yes.
So to wait till you hear back? Is what I'm trying to ascertain here, if we're getting creative or we're just waiting?
Yeah, I would like to wait.
Everybody okay with tabling, or would you?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving into new business, I'll keep you updated when I do hear back.
Thank you.
Wastewater treatment plant, our purchase request. Now it's your turn.
You're getting expensive down there.
So, last year I came to you with a quote of about $9,700 for a gearbox. You okayed it? Plus, I think it was like another $10,000 for the install. I had to come back a month later because they figured out that it was the right one. At that point, I asked you for $26,000 for what was supposed to be the right one. Well, we ordered that, we got it, we went to go install it, and it wasn't the right one.
Oh, shit.
So now, the right one is $35,858. This is all their equipment, this company's changed hands probably three or four times at least, Evoqua owns it now. These tanks were put in probably 1978, 1979. They were having a hard time figuring out which equipment we had. They believe they have it now.
Might have been cheaper just to send someone out, eh?
But there's no place else to get this, this is their equipment.
That was my question.
Did they take the other one back?
The other one's been sent back.
Okay.
The other one got sent back already, right away, as soon as, the installers are the ones who spotted it, and they said, "This is not the right one," and we sent it back right away.
So, how about the first one? That one you sent back, or?
That one we never even got, they figured out it was the wrong one before we even received it, that's why like a month later I was in here asking for the other money.
So we never really, we never used the money?
We never spent any money.
So we actually have?
We have, we have the money for it. It's kind of weird, last year I had zero money put into my capital outlay, I had zero money put into my uniform for my people.
Really?
But we still have the same amount of money, I just don't know what it is.
But the phone was covered.
It got spread out somewhere, somehow.
So is there any labor on top of this, Al?
Yes, we already okayed that. Then they're going to, they're going to honor the original amount.
Okay.
So...
So the labor's been approved, you just need a new motion to approve the new amount for the new gearbox?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the right angle gearbox assembly and the amount of $35,858, which includes the shipping and handling.
Support.
The right one was done, right?
We have a motion by Parker.
If not, I think we probably have to get the engineers involved, I don't know.
Send it back right away.
Could you call a roll?
And just to clarify, because I beat it up every time, there is nowhere else we can get this to obtain three bids.
This is part of what, this is part of what you'll see come into play with our asset management, and we're running into these issues where we don't have choices, because we're, our stuff is, I'm going to say antiquated, it's older, so there's nothing, there's no other choice. And that is where the money we are using when we increase these rates are helping with these issues.
So, I guess with that, we know a life expectancy and we can start budgeting then forward on a yearly basis, putting money into funds for stuff like this?
We check the oil out twice a year, change the oil out, the last one lasted like 278, but we have $5 that we put in at the same time.
Oh.
So you could run into this...
So this is any time now?
Yep. And there was no money in capital outlay last year?
You said, how many more?
Five more that were at the same time.
Along this same size and same model? So we could potentially be looking at another $170,000?
Potentially.
Okay, this, might want to...
We're taking the tanks down twice a year because of this, and changing the oil, making sure there's no water in the oil, changing the oil out twice a year.
So you're doing everything you can to...
Yeah.
Everything we can do to try to extend the life.
Right.
Thank you, Al.
Our village planner service, I'm sorry, okay, make your motion.
Hold on one moment, please. Roll call vote. Parker?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're moving into our village planner services. This is on here, back when we brought it in January, we did a six-month contract. That six-month is coming to an end here. Wanted to see if council wanted to take the option there is to extend and renegotiate, or where we need, where we need to go from here so that we have enough time.
How's it working out?
Fine.
How was it?
Wait, turn your mic on and say that again.
I hear she's pretty good.
She does very well. She was trained by...
I'll make a motion that we, uh...
No, go ahead.
A motion that we extend the contract.
Is there a length, or you want us to negotiate this extension to...
Is she requesting any negotiations?
It's just in the contract that if we would extend it, it will be renegotiated.
Do a year for the extension of the negotiation? I would support if it was for a couple months and we could go out for bid on it, just to see...
Oh, it's here in enough time to do that if you chose. That's why I brought it to our attention now. Either we can negotiate, or we can bid. It goes, it was six months, so we have till July.
Oh, July.
I'll pull my motion back right now.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I'd like to go out for bid if we have time, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we do, that's why we brought it up.
Okay.
You want to make that motion?
Do we have to? If we still have time?
We have to make a motion to go out for bid, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go out for bid for it.
I'll support.
A motion by Care, support by Parker, all in favor to going out for RFP for our village planning services.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go forward with that. We have our village park gazebo permit update. This is something Clerk Trapp wanted us to get on here, very much so, as she is the permitter, with the new park and the new gazebo. Take it away.
Okay, so in the past, people have requested the use of the old gazebo, and I would hand them over a, an event permit. It's typically been like, you know, one to three hours tops, they wanted to use it for various, you know, weddings, ceremonies, birthday parties, gatherings, very short and sweet, actually. And now with the new gazebo being erected, there's been interest still, but, so I felt it would be best to have some kind of policy in place, because it's a new asset to the village, and still allow for the rentals, but put a fee in place, and with the guidelines that I have written to be adhered to by the renter.
Have you noticed in any previous years, any issues with the people that were getting the event permits? Was there ever any tips or problems with previous years?
I have not, but we did it as a courtesy, and I would always give the permit to the police department, so they would know if there was like, you know, any scuttle going on, saying, "Well, I want to hang out in the gazebo." Well, no, we have it rented, so, but otherwise that, I never got any feedback that there was any issues. Correct, at the time, right, yes.
A couple of concerns that came up when I looked at it would be, if we do rent it and we have multiple events on a weekend, would there be any expectations from, we'll say, the second renter, that it's going to be clean and ready? And if the first renter, even though it says, "We'll clean up after themselves," they don't, then are we then liable to have DPW go out on weekends? And is the amount enough to cover the cost of a DPW guy on overtime, on a Saturday or Sunday? Was one concern that I had.
Well, I did give the breakdown of how much administrative fees would be per hour to process the permit, how much police department per hour to, you know, inspect and oversee, and DPW per hour. Having multiple, that's the other reason why I put up here, you know, length of time, no more than four hours, that's negotiable. Do we want to extend it to multiple, or if there's one event that day, you know, we're not going to take that chance of trying to do back-to-back to...
Eight to 12, or whatever it is, and then someone in the afternoon...
Right, I mean, that's an option, that's why I put that on here also, is that something we would be willing to do, have back-to-back-to-back, but then, yeah, that would bring in...
DPW has a minimum hours, right?
Yeah. Four.
When they come in on the weekend, so that's...
And it's not that we're trying to make money off of this and start this venture, money-making venture, it's to cover our costs. So if we determine it's only rented for one four-hour slot on a Saturday or a Sunday, but someone's still, to your point, between those days, would need to take a look at it.
How about the pod?
Well...
To cover any, like, adjustment, if somebody didn't clean it up, so...
I like that idea.
DPW's got to come in there.
Well, I believe that's, this is...
I think that would be part of the fee, but the only problem was...
This is paid upfront.
Correct. Could it be beyond that, like a hotel hold? If you trash it, you don't get that refund.
See, the deposits, you run into an issue with deposits of like, who's going to, who's going to go review it, who's going to go help inspect it? That's why having the fees upfront, and then, how do we know, you know, yeah, how much do they get back based on how they left it? Do we have a fee schedule for that? And then what's the timeframe for giving back the deposit? That's why I thought having a little, having it worked into the actual fee would cover us.
Mark, would it be able to include something that would cover something along the lines of village not being liable for the readiness of the park? If someone were to come in the hour before and trash it on a Saturday morning, not holding the village liable?
Well, you can, but if you're, essentially what you would be doing is giving somebody a license to use village property. And so you say, you can come from eight to noon, or whatever the time is, you come here, but if it's a mess, good luck.
Use as is.
So, I think not. I just think as a matter of public policy, that's probably not a good idea. You would want to protect yourselves against liability, you would want people to sign off against injury, harm, damage, things like that. But I, you can, can you say, "We're offering this space at this date and time for this price, and we make no promises as to condition?" Yes, you can do that. Yes, you can do that. The question becomes, does that create a greater problem than the one you're trying to solve? Now you've got complainers. I, I don't know, you have to, that's why.
Yeah, so then I guess then would the fee not have to cover DPW before and then after events? If, if there's multiple, at the overtime rate, at a minimum of four hours? And if we're giving it to them for four hours, then we're probably paying for at least five hours of a DPW worker to be out there on OT on the.
Catherine, is this DPW rate on here, the eighteen ninety-six? Is it the regular rate or the overtime rate?
That is the starting rate of, for the current contract.
Of the lowest paid employee.
The lowest paid staff member, starting.
We could potentially have somebody out there.
Correct.
Beyond this. And then did you factor in, because it's not just their hourly rate. Did you factor in like their benefit, uniform expense, insurance? Cause when you factor in that you're paying for someone to be there, that's the cost of the person, not just their hourly rate.
Right. No, I did not do that breakdown. I just did it based on their typical hourly rate. Cause then that hourly rate would be spread out throughout their benefits and the overtime and the compensation.
Okay.
But that is why I just ballparked some fees on here to be discussed.
I did ask that we waive reservation or payments. We still would like local agencies, boards to fill out the proper permitting stuff. But would we, we would waive the fees for them.
Yeah, and I mean, at the two hundred then, we would be, for residential, residents, we would be comping them, picking up some of the cost for them to rent, right? Cause if it's potentially twenty regular overtime, thirty dollars an hour times four hours, it's two hundred and forty just for DPW. So we would be subsidizing part of the residential.
Are you saying specifically to the, the item I just said for local agencies?
No, the residents.
Okay.
For residents, being only two hundred, we're gonna be paying out two forty at a minimum probably for a DPW.
Is there a scenario in this where a perfectly, the best-case scenario, user of the gazebo comes in, they're clean, they're tidy, and there's zero usage for DPW? Or are we gonna be seeing a five-hour charge every single time the gazebo is rented? I mean, maybe we could just have, I mean, we, we do have to address the one out of ten term in the.
Yeah, that's where you come into the happy medium.
That happens. But nine out of ten people are gonna be awesome with it and clean. Maybe that two hundred dollars is your cost. You snap a picture at the end and you get half your deposit, you get half your payment back if it is clean and tidy.
Part of the, the negative would be if it's not, you don't get another permit again.
That's correct.
That's fine. You're getting money back, you'll get a permit again.
But then still concerned for the multiple, multiple bookings in one day. What about the next guy? If it's not ready for him? Or someone, someone uses it in the morning, has breakfast and leaves everything or whatever. I'm just pointing it out. We have to make sure it's ready.
Well, we'll put it in here if there's only one rental a day. We're not gonna rent it more than once a day.
So then we have to have someone check it before the rental.
Yeah, and if there's one rental, like on a Friday night, Saturday or Sunday, DPW will go, they go around Monday morning anyways. I believe it's their day to do trash. If it's a single rental, we can just wait.
On Monday, but if you have it both Friday night, Saturday and Sunday.
But I mean, we can also decide that, do we wanna put that much on the gazebo, like one rental a day? First come, first served. I mean, that's also an option too. The only rentals that we have right now are the inquiries are just Parks and Rec movies and music in the park. No, I think it's just music in the park. I don't think they're doing movie in the park there.
So if there's a nice, clean, happy customer, do we have to charge the residents anything? I mean, DPW's gonna come clean it out on Monday anyway, so if someone's nice, clean, tidy on Saturday, they use a four-hour rental. There's no tiffs, no issues. I feel like the residents, that's, you know, we're kinda giving them this beautiful space that they can use. We shouldn't be making a huge profit necessarily.
We're not.
If it's used, if we need DPW to come out and hose it down, that's a big deal. Then like Megan said, maybe we don't issue them another permit in the future and we have that money to at least cover their overtime costs.
I think we need to gain some experience first. I would go with these numbers you've got here. Maybe for a season, maybe for two months. Get some experience under your belt, see what, is it, is it losing money big time? Is it making money? But to be honest, I don't wanna be meeting here after eleven o'clock and we got seven more items to go.
We just, we just wanna make sure that we are not losing out as the residents paying for something that maybe only a couple of residents will utilize or outside people will utilize. We wanna cover our costs right here.
Yeah, but we don't have the experience to know what the cost should be yet.
So if we end up at a loss, we readjust in two months?
We readjust in two months.
Okay, but regardless of the cost, there are policies, are rules and policies that were written. Are these gonna be sufficient for our new structure, our new asset in the village?
So going through that, I did look at.
Cause we could revisit the fees.
Few things popped up. Under the reservation process, second bullet point. The cancellation less than thirty days cannot be guaranteed. The date change will be available. Should that say cancellation or should that say change?
Reschedule?
Yeah.
Reschedule.
Yeah, rescheduling.
Reschedule.
Down to damage and cleaning requirements. Third bullet point, please do not draft. I think that should be drag.
Drag, yep.
Okay, uh, down a couple more that starts with the "the." It says "the" of items, such as, so it should just probably.
The use of items.
Okay. Next bullet point talks about halfway through, starts with a breach of the peace or disturbance or annoy patrons. While on the property, should that say anyone? Because that would also include guests or other people that are.
Disturbed to the peace or annoying of patrons while on the property. Like the local business people patronizing the local businesses. But annoying, is there another verb that we should use?
Well, I guess patrons, regardless, I just thought annoy anyone.
Okay.
I, I don't know if that makes sense or not. I'm not a English major.
Well, back up to bullet point number five. Where it says renters shall share the spaces outside the boundaries of the gazebo are with other village guests. I think "are" might need to come out.
Okay. Yep.
Yes, you're only reserving the gazebo. You do not get the whole footprint of the park.
Decorations. Fourth bullet point. Must be disposed as you're going through of immediately, talking about signage. Should that be removed of? Cause we just want them left there or do we want them actually removed from?
Removed or disposed?
Removed, we can add removed.
You might wanna mention the ordinance too, so that they're not, they would need to comply with the ordinance, sign ordinance so that they're not putting them.
Well, no, I think there's, it's in here that you are allowed like one, I thought I put this, included it in there. Like you're allowed one little sign saying, you know, shower this way. You're allowed that, but that's it and that has to be removed. Thought I had that in there.
It can't be put on an easement or a private property.
Right.
Yeah.
But I can readdress that, cause I thought I had that included.
You do under decorations, signs directing guests are permitted.
There you go. And those are the ones that have to be removed and or disposed of.
Noise and music, first bullet. Talk, amplified music must maintain, must be maintained at a reasonable volume. Can we define that based on?
We do have an ordinance. Yeah, I did find the ordinance that does describe that.
So that it can't, you know, travel or whatever. Smoking alcohol, second bullet point.
Could we add no glass? And people do, but if they're gonna rent it, we could specifically say no glass.
So second bullet point, alcohol is strictly prohibited any way within gazebo area.
Anywhere.
Yeah, just, okay. Trash disposal.
It was late afternoon. Yes.
No person shall destroy glass containers and leave broken glass pieces on any surface.
Just no glass.
I just don't know.
They're just saying, yeah.
Yes, no glass.
Okay. I know, that's where I did question who will empty on weekends. And then the next part, talking about vendor policy.
Yeah, that's a question for you guys.
Yeah, she's asking.
I, I think that kind of would fall into, if they want that also, maybe just include a special event permit?
Well, yeah, cause that's what, if you're gonna have a bounce house, then you need to get the electric check.
And quarter johns and stuff like that all are encompassed in the special event.
That's past what you're actually renting, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, and then they're renting, yeah, they're renting the space.
Yeah, cause I mean, that's a great birthday space compared to my backyard where there's dog poop.
Okay, that will fall under that.
Do you wanna look at it again or are we, are we bringing this back? Okay.
Just run it for a couple of months.
We'll bring it back again next month and we'll see where we're at. Yeah, it's not, so we, we got time.
We got time.
We just wanted to get this going again, just, just thinking ahead. Where are we? Our tree trimming bill?
Good idea, Catherine.
Thank you.
So, last year, the council approved a list of trees to be done with the amount of not to, of forty thousand dollars. Work was done at some point in there. The past president approved some trees in the DDA area. So the bill was sent to the DDA. It's not within the scope of what the village passed. We can approve eight thousand dollars worth of work. I did go to the DDA and asked them if they would jump in on this with us at all. They did offer two thousand dollars towards the invoice, which would leave us with six. So this is where we're at, asking you for six thousand dollars.
So I, I went through this, I read the emails. And while it looks like the DDA director did acknowledge that the work was being done, I don't see where it was ever approved by the DDA. And it sounds like Christine, or the past president, just kind of approved it cause they needed to fill eight hours' worth of space.
Correct, that's kinda what I just said.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I, I think if it's, if it's on us, they didn't approve it. They weren't aware of it. I said, thank you for offering the money. We're just gonna pay it in full because.
That's what you wanna do?
Let's own our wrong. If that's what was authorized by the past president without authorization from this board, then.
Right, and I told them, cause I went back and forth. I said, I'm coming asking before I bring it here, just because if I come here and go, we'll have yet to DDA yet. Wanted to address it. They thought that was fair. And I told them there was no pressure, like they, they often show a working with us.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion just to pay the eight thousand in total. Because it was authorized by our, our administration.
Okay, motion by Parker, support by Edwards. Roll call.
So really, sorry, really just be generously denying the two thousand from the DDA just because we already said we would flip the bill for that, essentially?
Kinda.
Because our president approved, our, our past president approved it without, so we own it.
It's kinda like our IT contract.
Okay, Parker?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Okay, and now you have before you your proposed DDA budget.
Uh, DDA placement of sign, isn't that first?
No.
Say if I'm reading it right.
Budget's first.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Oh. Mine's out of order.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Is it gonna take?
Oh, I don't even know where it is.
Oh, no.
Oh, I flipped it over, that's why. Never mind, we're good.
Okay, any questions, concerns? There is time to send back if there is. Otherwise, a motion is accepted.
I'll make a motion to approve the Romeo Downtown Development Authority budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Support?
We have a motion by Edwards, support by Bartholomew.
Does that need to include any total numbers or is that sufficient motion?
Let's say as presented.
As presented. For a total budget of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents.
There you go.
Who supported?
Bartholomew. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Sorry, Bartholomew?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Moving into the relocation of the Little Library. This again was a request of the DDA. This library was in the alley that was opened back up. Not a safe place for people to stop and look at books now that it's a working alley, correct? So they've asked to relocate it. Their first preference is Parker Alley. Where between Mary Raymond and Yorikobi, that alley there. They did offer a second runner-up. That's the picture in the corner of the park, back parking lot there, the southwest corner.
Well, I like the southwest area. I sat in on that meeting and I heard that that area could use some more traction. My concern with this is the height. And would kids be climbing up on the curb and then trying to open a door?
Probably.
And fall and, and create injury.
We could sink it in such a way, I would think. You could get down.
You'd have to probably cut it.
Or do that and get it to the right height.
How deep that pole goes into the ground to give stabilization.
I like that spot too. Can we, so we can just make it so it's accessible from standing on the sidewalk?
Yeah, maybe bring it back farther so it's not by the ADA.
Closer to the pub.
We do need to think about the clearance at the corner, so I will, you can direct me to pick the safest spot so that clearance can be seen and put at the right height if you would like.
Yeah, and it just looks like if you go either to the, that would be the north or the east, that grade is not as, that step isn't as high. So it might be better used back farther, that's all.
Right.
Like the tail end of the pickup truck, to the red truck, maybe?
Oh, yeah, you were like over, over here.
Right.
More, a stop sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think stop sign.
Here, like, cause you're on a sidewalk, you're not on a corner.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I like that. Cause this, yeah, this doesn't need motion, does it? I make a motion to approve the DDA placement of the Little Library in the southwest corner of the parking lot.
It's hard when there's no addresses.
Where President deems it safe.
Second.
Uh, motion by Parker, second by Care, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I will inform the DDA. We'll get a missed dig and we'll pick a spot. Our social media policy update. This is something I requested in coming into office. Being able to see who was admins at one time on our website or our social media. Clerk Trap and I would like to clean that up and have the language, second page. Define that admins on social media pages shall be village president and clerk and no others. And that the village president, should he or she, he so choose, they can designate an administrator. And should they do that, it will be made public information upon the designation. So that's the update there.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the social media policy as presented in front of us.
Support?
Uh, motion by Care, support by Bartholomew. Any discussion?
Yeah, what was the concern for making that change?
There was, at some point in time, we had a contractor as an admin and we had a village trustee as an admin. Admins can kick, have full power of this social media site. And I believe that should stay with the, the office, yeah, the office chairs. And that having one contractor be on there, well then, should we allow all the contractors to be on there to share their own content when they feel like it? Just opens up too much.
Would there be any need, this question, cause I'm not in there every day, to include the other elected?
Not currently, but she's not really a social media user. I mean, but it could be, yeah, it could be in there, yeah.
Wanted to get in and add some.
Right, yeah, we could add her.
Information.
Sure, I'll amend my original motion to include the position of treasurer as well.
Okay.
Cause the way it reads, the president can still appoint whoever they want and it could be five contractors.
But we have, it has to be made public.
Which they would be appointed not as an admin though, they would be appointed as, um, can't recall the next term under it.
So can we change it?
Isn't it, um, there's a term on social media where underneath the admin comes the next step where you do have all access and usage, however, you cannot kick off the admin.
So that, should that be, shall designate and moderator?
Yeah, I'd have to figure out, yeah, I'd have to figure out that next, that next name. Because essentially, somebody given administrator rights could steal the page.
Right.
So that's, trying to avoid that.
Yep, so moderator.
So can we?
I'll look up the actual term that face, social media uses.
Can we see the, does this need to be done this?
No, no, yeah.
Before we make movement on it?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I did make the motion to withdraw, but I'm like seeing it in its entirety.
Well, motion will still stand, cause it's upon Megan's designation of what those rules would be anyway.
Yeah, we gotta change that term and I like to see things in their entirety before approval, but that's.
Oh, and add the treasurer. Well, it's, it's not your motion, it's no one, Mr.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll just withdraw it.
Okay, we will.
Table and bring back at the next meeting. Our fire and ALS subcommittee included was a letter from Mr. Philbrook saying that Bruce Township is ready and open to negotiating the next contract. So it is in our court to resurrect our fire ALS subcommittee, which at that time was myself along with Christine Melzon, which makes it a committee of me now. So if one or two would like to jump on.
I'd be willing to sit on the fire ALS committee.
I've done it before with them.
Okay, do we?
We have to get this done before next meeting?
No, 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 we have time. This is gonna take some negotiating.
We got, we got like a year.
It was about.
Typical, right?
No, we are.
Gotta go right now.
No, we are again, forward-thinking.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to create the fire ALS? Okay, so is there a motion to create the fire ALS subcommittee? Edwards, Edwards, Parker, President Poznanski?
I'll make the motion to create the fire ALS committee, trustee Edwards, myself and President Poznanski.
Motion by Parker.
Support.
Support by, sorry, what's your name? Fowler? It's too much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I will reach out to supervisor Philbrook and request next steps.
Yeah, we just put ourselves in another subcommittee.
I know. Good times.
Okay, so next we had our travel policy. Again, this is another idea here of which we don't have one. So instead of creating one and going through all the legwork, first I wanted to throw this out there to you to see if there was interest before I went through the effort of creating one. These are some, I went on the Michigan Municipal League, pulled off some of their smaller communities of what they have and what they say. Just keep in mind, we have nothing at the moment.
I think it's a good policy to have.
I think it's cool. I do think it, it could include some kind of language of maybe a discretionary body of, we can decide to authorize those purchases or who, one person can't just go on a business trip to Hawaii and spend X because we have a travel policy in place now. Can we set some standards of it has to be approved by the board above a certain amount or?
Correct. What, that's where currently we, if I, Frankenmuth, there's often stuff up there. And because there is money in the training, I go, okay, I'm going up to Frankenmuth for the three days.
There's no real policy to protect that.
I would, yeah, I would like us to go, okay, there's, you're offered the base rate hotel room. Anything above that that you wanna get, that's on you. Do we? I know at the higher level government, they do give a stipend for meals. Do we wanna include any of that or we say no meals, that's all on your own?
I think you should include meals, but this price, the prices that you have on here are no longer accurate.
These are examples, I just wanted to know.
Continental breakfast.
See, I have to go tackle Belle.
Well, or like this, one, I know that you can say fifty dollars a day and then you get to divvy that up for your three meals how you like. Yeah, that kind of thing. I just wanna know, is this a road that you are all looking and agreeable to go down? Because I don't wanna take more time to create something.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's cool.
Yes.
We will continue. I don't know if that can. I will bring that back at some point. I don't know if it will make it for next month considering, I'm also trying to get us, apply applications for some grants, so there's a lot going on right now. Tree maintenance, this, no, I'm sorry. No, that did totally get forgotten. I apologize. So basically, I threw this on at the last minute, the tree maintenance.
Great.
That we, as I said before, we approved forty grand. Do we want an actual contract in a bid? This year going forward, I think we also have another forty. We generally use a specific contractor, but considering how much it is, I thought, well, maybe we should lock this in.
It was brought to my attention earlier today by Tim Metz, did we already discuss this in the last few years? That, that's why we have been using ABLE. He thought we were talking about, there was a meeting where we were discussing a couple different, the tree vendors, and yeah, it escapes me because he brought it up this morning that.
But we have nothing in our contractor.
We have nothing in our contractor. Any meeting minutes? Anybody recall?
I, I do remember we discussed going out for bid.
Yeah.
The past president went and just said it was all emergency work.
Oh, okay, okay.
Authorized it herself without board approval.
Because I feel like we would have a contract in, in.
Well, yeah, I'm trying to remember what the conversation was, okay.
So is this something we would like an RFP on?
I agree, yes.
Okay.
Mission, do you need a motion? No, do we need a motion to go out for RFP on?
Yes, yes, please.
I'll make a motion to go out for RFP on the tree maintenance with, is that gonna include DDA at this time or no?
Well, theirs was just done and we're, I mean, the scope of work needing to be done, I already have a list of residents calling in with concerns. I'm gonna have that looked at first.
Motion to go out for RFP, separating the maintenance that needs to be done in the DDA from the rest of the village.
Mo, that, that's gonna be what we're gonna find out. Motion by Parker, support by Care, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, somebody make a motion to adjourn, please?
Unanimous? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Parker, support by Rousseau, all in favor of adjourning? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.